If I could call tonight's meeting to order, Tom Chapa.
Here.
Heather Delcante.
Here.
Pamela Dowd.
Here.
Lisa Glidden.
Here.
James McKenzie.
Here.
Sean Anmeck.
Here.
Linda Serino.
Here.
Zachary Dama. If you would all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There is one item for personnel this evening, a resignation for Alden Fennell. If I could have a motion? Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, I will turn it over to Dr. Calvin for the workshop.
Good evening, board. Great to see everybody back tonight. We have some of our folks here with us, as you are aware. Let's see if I can get this to work for me tonight. It does not like me, I tell ya. As you are aware, we have been engaged in a efficiency study, and Matt, it doesn't want to turn for me. It just does not like me. Try that one? Okay. Let's see, okay. And there, there we go, alright. As a part of our study, we have had, we've got four different pieces that have been going on. First, we had a group come in, the Siemens group, to do some work on looking at efficiencies in terms of, you know, energy efficiencies, special projects that we might be able to do. And then our second piece is with Dr. Rick Timms. Third piece is with the TAS group, Mr. Chris Andrews. And then we had some information that came to us, preliminary information about what's happening with our study this week from Mr. Alan Poehl. So tonight, we do have several of our speakers here with us, our presenters and study facilitators tonight. And if I can get this to work for me. It doesn't want to move on me. I don't know what it is. I'm not sure, Matt. There we go. So tonight, we have two of our facilitators here. First, we have Dr. Rick Timms. He is the executive director for the statewide school finance consortium. Pretty busy person, does a lot with school finances, and he has spent a lot of time looking at our finances and looking for efficiencies, things that we might do better and that we might be able to be better efficient at as a district. And so Dr. Timms is with us, I'm going to invite him up to the front here today. And I want to thank him for his work and his efforts in advance, and we're going to spend some time with him tonight learning about our district finances, so thank you, Dr. Timms, I'm going to give that to you.
Thank you, thank you for the invitation.
Watch your step there, please.
I played in a rock band for 20 years.
Yes, he's a guitar player.
Well, thanks for inviting me. I've got a presentation here for you, and what I'm going to do is hand it out, but all I'd ask you to do is, I'm a next teacher, if you'd give me the privilege of staying with me and not getting ahead of me, because as a next social studies teacher, we tend to tell everything as if it's a story. Okay? So what we're going to do is kind of walk you through what we're handling, figure it out, no, don't know, things to be concerned about, some things not to be concerned about. Whoopsie, I almost bit. I got this. And let's see here.
Thank you.
We spent a lot of time driving the business official crazy over the last few months.
Just be on the same side, can we grab that microphone so we can get you, make sure we get you into the.
I think you'll hear me, how's that?
Okay, great.
Okay, so here's, here's what we used for our data sets. We looked at the ST3 from prior years for the school district, and I'm actually going to give you a rundown of that. We took a look at state education department website calculations that are constantly updated. I don't know if you're aware of this, but the last week or so, state aid runs came out, and of course, they're wrong. Everybody's is wrong. The only thing that'll probably be correct on it, it might be your foundation aid, and some of the rest of them might be correct or close. They'll be close. The reason is because they actually give you the estimate now, but some of the books aren't closed until this coming June 30th. Okay? So this is where your accountant says, I think you're going to be paying taxes somewhere like this if you keep making the same kind of money you're making. So that's what we've got here. For instance, BOSI's aid is calculated, so you'll be paid aid next year. The problem is, you'll be buying BOSI services until June 30th. So they're making an estimate. Building aid, I'm going to go through all of these with you. Took a look at your auditors' reports and recommendations, took a look at buses and capital project data, and the reason we do that is because they're big-ticket items. And we're going to spend some more time talking about buses tonight, because the legislature, in its wisdom, has actually mandated starting in 2027, you buy all electric buses forever, and that no bus be on the road past 2035 that is not electric. And I know Chris is going to be doing a report later after me, he knows more about this than I do, but the price is going to be pretty big. It's not going to be like a $140,000 bus, it's more like a $263,000 bus. And you've got a whole fleet of them. There are 50,000 buses that are diesel in New York that are going to have to go, starting in 2027. That means everybody's going to be competing for buses simultaneously. I don't know if you know anything about economics and law of supply and demand, but that usually doesn't say well. We take a look at bonds, bond anticipation notes, in other words, your debt, things that have to do with your debt, existing debt service schedules for fall-offs and things like this, whether there's better times to do capital project. We take a look at ongoing and/or emergency projects, EPCs you've done. Foundation aid history and potential changes. We've got some unbelievably fantastic news for you in this report about your foundation aid. It's going up about 26%, which is huge, and in two years, it may go down to practically nothing as an increase. Okay, so this is going to be a problem. Other related state aid, expense-driven aids, but not limited to. For instance, excess cost aids, tremendous amount of money in your budget spent on students with special needs, most needy kids in the district, certainly due to them. Certainly, that's what the whole purpose of a school district is, is to help kids out to the best of their ability, to help those kids grow and prosper, but it is an expensive proposition. BOSI's and also transportation aid are the big other big-ticket items for you. We take a look at your reserves, types of reserves you have by the district, the types of reserve you don't have. We look at the degree to which the district possesses or uses capital reserves in specific. And that's because capital reserves are a gift that keeps on giving. Capital reserves are considered in the financial world for school districts, the most beneficial type of reserve there is. The most, and I will explain why. The fund balance history and future opportunities or threats. So we're taking a look at your fund balance history, which has been pretty robust over the years, although we see some fluctuations. And then we also want to talk a little bit about how things have changed a little bit because of COVID and your finances, but also because of the federal grants. The CERSA grant and the ARPA grant are having a big influence on your district budget, and we want to talk a little bit about that. And I also want to talk about the things that we call operational, day-to-day operations of how the district operates, just, not just business-wise, but how the district spends money. We want to take a look at tax cap calculations. I'm actually going to do an example of a tax cap calculation for you, one you've already done and seen, because I just picked out one of yours that we had. And I'm going to actually change the calculation based on something I see might happen to you. And then what we're going to do is take a look at some potential financial events that have implications for this tax cap. So what I'm going to do is alter the tax cap for you to show you what could happen depending upon where your finances land. We also took a look at the reports of the controller. Now, your controller reports are really non-consequential, per se, but what we do is we look at all, I read every, every month, he issues reports of all these school districts, and I read all those reports, to find out if he showed up tomorrow, if he would find a particular problem. So I will point out anything I see. The use of funds, appropriate fund balances, unappropriate fund balances, and we're going to work our way through what those are and how those work. We look at the projected teachers' retirement system rates and the employees' retirement system rates, and those are really important, because those are big-ticket items in your budget. And I don't know if you know this, but they fluctuate. So pension systems are paid for two ways. Well, first of all, the big question is, where'd the price come from? Well, what they're doing now is they're trying to figure out, using actuarial tables and a whole bunch of millions of accountants, it seems, to figure out how much money the pension system has to pay out when people retire. Well, part of the dilemma, of course, is, is people are teaching longer, retiring when they're older, therefore, they have made more money. The pension system is a rate against their salary. They get a percentage of their salary when they retire. They are living longer. So what pension systems are starting to find out is they need huge amounts of money. Now, they're both healthy, but they're healthy for a good reason. First of all, they have two major sources of incomes, the pension systems. The first one is called the stock market. They actually invest in stocks. And when the stock market does well, they have a propensity to drop their rates, all things being equal. When the stock market does not do so well, they have a propensity to increase their rates, all things being equal. Well, where do they increase the rates to? School districts. So what actually happens is, whatever they can't get in stocks and investments, investments, they get really through the school districts. So that's really how it works. And right now, I'm a little concerned about where the stock market's going on inflation and everything else, so this could be problematic. We look at projected contractual obligations of the district. So you have a whole bunch of contractual obligations. You've got a whole bunch of, you've got teacher contracts, administrative contracts, you've got all kinds of contracts, and some are up soon, and some are going to be around for a couple of years. The dilemma we're finding, though, is that in many cases of the school districts across the state, and for state aid, I work with 400 school districts, so I get a lot of data from these school districts. They're calling me up in a panic, because what they're finding out is, is that their labor costs are escalating rapidly. Right now, districts that have large fund balances, it appears that the labor unions want a piece of that action. Okay? So what actually happens, if you save money during the COVID period, there are actually districts now that are negotiating at the table whereby demands are being made for a COVID bonus. In other words, to be paid because they were here during COVID, because you now didn't have to spend all the money you normally would have spent during COVID, because you didn't have as many sick days, you didn't have as much transportation, and so on. So there was a little bump maybe in your fund balance. We're also finding out in areas like bus drivers, bus monitors, social workers, teacher aides, teacher assistants, and certain teaching positions, that they're very hard to come by. I've got some districts that may, this may not be your condition, but I have a couple who actually have lost employees, a lot of employees, almost their entire bus driver fleet, to their neighboring districts who are now paying more. I've got some districts paying $21 an hour for a bus drive. I don't know what you pay, but whatever it is, I don't think it's $21 an hour. And McDonald's was paying $15.75 in one of these places, and they thought the hours were more flexible, didn't have to put up with parents and kids, and liked the, and liked that work. So there's a competition for this labor force. We also want to talk about the analysis, the impact of district budgets due to loss of pilot agreement payments. I worked with another district not too far from here, and they're attorneys to renegotiate a new pilot for their power plant, which the pilot was up. It was a struggle and a half, because there was, the place that owned the pilot, or that owned the power plant did not want to renew the pilot. Matter of fact, they didn't even want to have any to do with it. Now, they ended up getting one, but your pilot agreement for your power plant represents 28% of your total revenue. So it would be like, if you lost the pilot, you just line everybody out, count, line everybody up, count up by fours, and every number one goes home. That's, that's the value of the revenue. We take a look at your tax levy history, okay, and where that's been going. Took a look at your district's revenue expenditure variance history. What we mean by that is where you're spending more or less, and the degree at which it is increasing or decreasing. We also look at recent or pending statute, regulations, decisions of the commissioner of education that might have implications on the district's finances. So there's a lot of new rules that we probably won't get into now, maybe Chris can share some later, but there's a whole bunch of new rules. When you go to, when you go to electric, you can't unemployed anybody that's working on a diesel fleet, so you have to retrain them all. So if they don't know how to work on them, you have to go and train them on how to work these buses. There's also, the new pending statute, of course, is the law saying that, like I said, by 2027, you're going to be buying electric buses. The dilemma is, right now, there's really a schedule in the district, hypothetical schedule, to buy about eight million buses, eight million dollars worth of buses over the next seven years. By the time we get to that seventh year, you're going to be wishing they were all electric. But the bus, the electric buses are so much more. So this is, this is going to be, I think, a little chink to your armor in terms of your finances. Evidence of district-wide long-range financial planning. I think there is some evidence there, you do have some reserves, so that's, that's always nice, because we don't know, I'm a little worried about this pension system. I'm definitely worried about any capital expenditures going forward, because what we're starting to find out now is, is that long-lead items and the cost of these items and inflation is starting to catch up with the construction industry, as well as labor, labor costs. So we're starting to see that some of these capital projects are starting to have a new life of their own in terms of cost. We also want to start thinking about technology for the district. So if the district, we'll say, had bought during the COVID period, we'll say, a whole bunch of laptops or iPads for the kids, and so on, they get worn out, they get lost, the OS changes, whatever, the operating systems, and so on. What is the plan to replace a huge number of computers in a short period of time? To me, I think what we want to do is, the plan should always be involved away, so we don't end up hurting the regular general fund budget. So there are ways to get around that. Then there's the issues of the normal stuff, classroom furniture, desks wear out, tables wear out, chairs wear out, things like this, as well as everything else that's in the classroom. Also, there's the, the idea of considering, tonight's going to be a snowstorm supposedly, I don't know about here, but where I live, we're supposed to get almost a foot. So there's the issue of, you know, how much does it cost to buy a brand-new stake rack truck, or a couple stake rack trucks if you have multiple schools, and a couple pickup trucks, or plows, or whatever it is? These things start costing a lot of money, and they could have a negative effect on the budgets, there way we can plan ahead. Now, I have, I did put down, I, the interviews with the director of Business of Finance, and that's really an understatement. This lady should have combat pay, because I drove her totally nuts for weeks and weeks and weeks on edge. So thank you, Nancy, I just want to publicly thank you. I must ask her to look off so many things, her head was spinning, and she's also trying to run a business office so we get this report done. So thank you very much. And of course, conversations with your superintendent of school, always in terms of what we're trying to accomplish here, and the importance of making sure that we have a good financial plan to keep the educational mission going. So I like to think strategically and not operationally always. I think most people think operationally. Now, what's the difference? Well, basically, it's this. What we're trying to do is improve things, either the quality of things, the efficiency of things, the effectiveness or the economy scale of things. That's what we're always trying to do, and I think we do make strides over time. But what happens, life gets in the way. All of a sudden, it becomes a lot more demands. We start handing out things, we start doing things better, all of a sudden, everybody has a bright idea of how to do more things better. And sometimes, we lose that original momentum. People do get tired out. They got tired out of COVID, and then they're going to get tired out of all initiatives. So what I think we want to do is try and figure out really where we want to go. A strategic, strategic action is what we want to accomplish, and my piece, really, is your finances. What do you want to accomplish with your finances? The interesting thing is, is you are called the Board of Education, you're not called the Board of Finances, you're not called the Board of My Neighbor's Money, you're not called the Board of Giving Money Away, you're not do favors, you're not called the Board of any of that stuff, you're called the Board of Education. So the most sanctimonious thing is to maintain this educational program and, and keep it robust, so the kids do well. So we really need some underpinning here. The other thing, too, is we want to make sure that we have this ability to keep this thing going without any political turmoil. So we always need public support. So the way I always look at it is kind of like this. We have a current reality of where we are and what we're doing, and let's face it, the district does a lot of the good things right, but there's a lot of operational things that are like an automatic pilot. But what I'm thinking of, we've got to look at the desired future. And what I'm really worried about looking forward is, first of all, let me just say that your district financially is in superior, excellent, total excellent shape. But I am worried about the future, particularly with that pilot, particularly with inflation, particularly with capital costs coming, and these buses, I think, are going to be one heck of a lift. Alright? So that's what I'm worried about. Right now, I must tell you, you could probably reach any desired future if all those fall in line for you. You've got a great district financially. But there are some things on the horizon I think we have to take a look at. So this is an example of your ST3. So what I did is, I took your ST3 from 2016-17. So when you see a school year, just be aware that in the, in the parlance of finance, the school year is June 30th, the school year. So a 2017 year is the 16-17 school year. Okay? So what we've got is, we take a look at it, and we're going to take a look at the expense side first. Let's just take a look at the top half, or top, I guess it's top third on the page. So what we really have is, we have a general fund budget that was approved by the voters, and every now and then, we have these modifications to the expenses. Could be grants coming in, it could be all kinds of things, capital projects, transfers to capital, emergency projects, it could be a ton of things that occur. So we have this modification, so we add those first two lines together to get what's actually the total expense package. Then what we do is, we have the actual expenditures. Now remember, a budget is not supposed to be spent out. A lot of people seem to think it is, but it's not. A budget's supposed to be big enough, so that anything that goes wrong, you can take care of, because you can't levy taxes twice in the same school year. So if all of a sudden, this happened to me, I had a family that actually had three wheelchair-bound students come into my district, okay, that were being fed through a tube that needed a personal nurse, and were required to be educated in my school district. Okay? $450,000 later, we were all set. The aid for that will not come in until the next year. But here's how excess, they call that excess cost aid, here's how it works. Each district has a threshold. What that means is, you have to spend X amount of dollars first, maybe 50,000, maybe 60,000 per kid, whatever it is. And then you get a percentage of the money after that. But the problem is, you have to front all the money for a year before you get any reimbursement. So as these kids are coming in, you're pouring money out, but you can't get reimbursed until the next year, and you only get a small portion of the reimbursement. So a district says to me sometimes, gee, look at this, we've got $400,000 in excess cost aid, is that good? I said, yeah, but it might have cost you $1.2 million to get it. So the key thing here is, the budget's got to be big enough for anything. I've got school districts calling me up, they're, when the snow is flying, their trucks were breaking down. How much is this new big plow truck with the Zander and all? $83,000. Where are we going to find the money? How old is this? Well, it's a 1983 Harvester. I don't know if you know what that is, but they don't even make them anymore. So I'm thinking, didn't you guys, you know, well, can you help us out now? Well, you're not even a client, well, why are you going to help me out? Well, first of all, you, actually, you had no authorization to buy another truck to replace this. They couldn't even get a leased truck. I didn't even want to tell you what happened, but it should be big enough. Now, if we look across this page, I've got a little red line in expenditures, you'll see in seventeen, you would underspend your budget by three point seven million, the next year, three point nine, next year, one point six, next year, three point nine, next year, six point four, and we're looking at around a million dollars this year. So technically, your ability to carry over money to, to create fund balance is actually on the decline here a little bit. This doesn't mean it won't bounce back up, by the way, but it's not as robust as it was back in sixteen seventeen. That doesn't mean you don't have adequate reserves either, because you used the money in the prior years to build the adequate reserves. But the key thing is, is you can start to see things are tightening up on the expense side of the budget. So it's kind of like I planned to expend this for my hot water tank, I planned to spend this for my gas, I planned to do this with my bus, uh, for my, excuse me, my car payment, and now I'm comparing what I budgeted for these things versus what I actually spent. All right, now, if we look at the revenue picture, we've got the same type of thing, we've got budgeted revenues, modifications, and then we add them together, then we have the actual, and then what we've got is the difference. And then the revenue picture, we've got one point nine, one point four, uh, a hundred forty-nine, you see it vacillates quite a bit, two point seven, a minus five point seven eight, that's usually when, when, uh, state aid is late, and it is late on some, in some cases, comes in late, so it can't be charged that year. Four hundred ninety-five and about a million bucks this year. So then what we do is we kind of add the, the two red boxes together. So let's go across the page, do the, the red boxes, the, the last red box. Five point six nine five million, four point, uh, one two, four point three, three point three, six point nine, two. So your ability to carry over is starting to diminish a little bit. We hope this is not a trend, of course. But the key thing is, I think what happens here is this budget, since at least I started working with the district, has been right-sized in such a way as I think that amount will diminish over the next year. I mean, like, a lot. Because I think this budget's been artificially lowered by eating the fund balance that we were actually creating here. So what's actually happening is you can see definitely these numbers do change and do go down. The, the key thing is, is that this big year here, the six point nine, this is our COVID year. So you weren't running the buses all the time, right? You didn't have as many people claiming sick days and personal days and all the rest of it, right? You didn't have to do all the coaches, you didn't have to do all this, you didn't have to do all that. So most district, every district I'm working with, by the way, I'm doing fifty of these, uh, every one has excess fund balance in that year compared to the other years, okay, because of COVID. Now, what we've got here though is, if this is a case whereby we're supposed to be doing an analysis, not just filling out a spreadsheet. And when I say analysis, we're trying to get deeper meaning to the finances. So the big question is, okay, we duck, we looked at what you budgeted versus what came in. We looked at what's your budget for revenues versus what came in. Now, how about we just figure out, did you spend more than you took in, period? In other words, am I making more than I'm spending this year regardless of what I budgeted, or is it the reverse? Well, we see here, when you're here, of course, obviously, we've had, we've had emergency projects and all kinds of things going on and transfers to capital, so that does some of it. But if you'll notice, you are not really overspending the budget, you get this one year, but that's because of a, I think, uh, the, the way the bookkeeping is done with, with, uh, capital and so on. Other than that, you're not, so that's a really good sign for a district. So kudos to the district. I've got a couple plans I'm actually delivering and have delivered the last couple of months, uh, whereby, you know, they're spending out five, six hundred thousand more than they're bringing in. So they're literally eating their fund balance, okay, and, um, I think they're going to have some real problems. And then, of course, what we have is known as the assigned appropriate fund balance, and it vacillates, and it should. I've got districts that call me up all the time, say, the controller's here, am I having problems with my appropriate fund balance? I said, well, what is it? And they say, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Is that bad? I said, well, what was it the year before? Five hundred and sixty-nine thousand. What was it the year before? Five hundred and sixty-nine thousand. What was it the year before? Five hundred and sixty-nine thou- yeah, you've got a problem. Because what the controller's going to say to you is, how can you have a budget that went from fifty million to twenty million? And the difference between your revenues and expenses every one of those last seven years ends up exactly five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. How is that possible? It's actually impossible. So it leads the, the controller to believe the district is making things up. When they vacillate like this, it's good news. Now, we don't want them getting too big, is the problem. So when we started having like up here at four million dollars, this would be too big to me, all right? So the idea is if you can balance the budget, great. The problem is you have to have money to balance the budget with. What is an appropriate fund balance? Normally, what happens, if you look at any of these spreadsheets, for instance, let's just use here, is that the budget here is eighty-eight point five million for the expenses, but the revenues are eighty-seven point six six seven. So you're short eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand based on the budget. So the district, the appropriate fund balance means that the district is pledging that if they spend out the entire expense codes and they only get into revenues they have budgeted, they pledge to use eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of their own money to balance the budget. Where would you get this out of? You'd get it out of unappropriate, unreserved fund balance, which is a fancy name for your cash on hand. I'll give you an example of it, I'm working around with mine. Okay, cash on hand? All right, or you would have to take it out of a reserve. But you got to be careful because some reserves are very restrictive, you just can't go and take money out. So technically speaking, I see a healthy district here, although I do see a diminution in the amount of fund balances being carried over, over the period of time. But that doesn't mean it won't continue. Matter of fact, I'm going to have good news for you, I think we can continue some of it for some period of time, think we can boost it back up. Now, let's go and take a look at your state aid. Now, this has got a lot of numbers on this page, and I'm just going to hit some of the, the, the big ones that are important. The first one is foundation aid. Foundation aid is the major category of aid. This aid is going to go up twenty-six percent for you. Somewhere around twenty-two point seven million to around twenty-eight point seven million, almost six million dollars, this is going to go up for you next year. Now, how'd this happen? Well, I happen to be a litigant, I'm a plaintiff in a lawsuit against the state of New York, my organization, statewide school financing consortium. And we actually kind of have won the lawsuit. The governor has called surrender, the new governor, and has promised to pay districts all the money they owe them, at least starting now, not retroactively, but starting now. And now, Swigel's been one of those districts that I have represented for years, trying to get this money away from Russell, from the state. And the state is now going to say it, said that we're going to pay you the money we owe you. In other words, we're going to bring you up to what we call full funding, your full amount of foundation aid that you deserve based on the formula within the next two years. And if you'll notice on this page, look at this, twenty-two seven, twenty-eight seven, thirty-four six. Everybody following along? And look at that, five point nine, five point nine. But then something's going to happen to you, okay, and it's not going to be pleasant. You will be paid in full. If you're paid in full, how much does anybody owe you? Nothing. Now, what I've done is, I've actually put in my projections praying that you get three percent more, but if you'll notice, you're going to go from a six million dollar increase for two years to a one million dollar increase thereafter. Now, why'd I pick three percent? Well, we're trying, we're trying to guess here, but it's got to be an educated guess. And that's because right now, all the districts that have been paid in full, the governor's recommending a three percent increase for them. Inflation is now eight point five. So that three percent for those districts is not going to be a big help. But I'm trying to keep it going for you here by putting in the three percent. This number here could turn out to be zero. So in other words, this number and this number could be the same number. This is one of your biggest revenue categories. All right, so this is kind of like, I'm in great shape now, hon, everything's going great. Oh, yeah, well, your boss just called, can you call him back? Sure. I just got fired. No more money. You'll still keep getting the same amount, but you won't get any increases and your costs are going to increase. Well, we're going to put in three percent as our best case scenario, hoping that they can continue. Now, what you should be asking yourself right now is, how come the state all of a sudden surrendered and decided to pay us all this money? I mean, what happened? I'll tell you what happened. It was called the federal government. The American Rescue Plan. The state is using its federal money to pay us off. Here's the problem. That money will be gone at the end of this twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The state will no longer have those funds. That's why I dropped you to three percent. It's not like you're going to keep on this cash cow. All right, so this is a case whereby the boss said to me, well, you can work another year, but then that's it. That's what, basically, how this works colloquially. So what happens is I see it coming, yes?
These are the kind of teachers that will take questions as we go?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So am I, by the way.
Okay.
Um, so I'm, I guess I'm not really understanding how you're looking at this. Um, because when I look at it, I say, we have twenty-two point seven mil now. We're going to get in three years with these increases, we'll be at thirty-five, six, right? So that's thirteen million dollars more than we're getting currently. And we're still going to keep getting that much more, it's just that the annual increases may not be there, correct?
That is correct.
So to me, this isn't a fiscal cliff as opposed to a fiscal plateau. Because we're still going to be in the benefit, very, very big benefit compared to where we're sitting today, right?
Well, you know, it'd be the same as if I said, okay, let's just say this was happening to me and my personal economy. I'd say, well, at least I still get the same amount of money. But damn, I do not want to go buy a truck now compared to last year. Because that actually has nothing to do with this. I think what's going to happen is the cost of business for you is going to escalate beyond your ability to, to have this, and I think it will result in a cliff.
So you view it going down?
No, no, the revenue will stay stable, your expenses will drag down.
Okay, so the expenses will go up.
That's what I'm talking about. Right now, we're only talking about this revenue.
Right, but.
So we only have like a, a zillionth of the package.
So, okay, so I get what you're saying there, it's just, it, from the way you're describing, it doesn't seem as dire to me.
Well, well, here's the thing, it's kind of like this, you're going like this, you're going up twenty-six percent.
Sure.
Okay, for two years, and then I've got it, that's at three maybe. So the rate of decline of your rate of increase is horrific.
No, I get that.
Okay, that's one.
All right, and, you know, as a union member, there were years where I had really well-negotiated contracts, and there was one contract, we had zero percent for three years. Every year.
Right, right.
And you think about the cost of living, I get that.
Was this in a public school?
Um, it's, uh, university professors, U U P.
Different, but, but completely.
Still, the idea that.
I was union president for twelve years.
And sometimes you have a level where there might be years where you don't get a salary.
Well, I don't think it'll happen in a public school. Okay?
All right.
All right, so, uh, I really don't, I mean, I, I, I was union president for twelve years, believe me. We'd be, I'd be borrow, I'd be at your house every night, reminding you of how you have to be. Really, seriously, I would. And you would be. Uh, so then we've got these other aids right here. So what happens is we've got all these other aids, and these other aids are also big, big ticket items. Now, you'll notice there's a big boost here. Now, it's a big, here to here, and then to here. So what we've got here is this is where your capital projects are coming online. So what you'll see in the state aid runs, you'll see your building aid is always wrong, especially if you're in the middle of a capital project. There's something called the law of chapter ninety-seven, and the chapter ninety-seven law says this. Uh, it says that no district will receive building aid for any building project until a certain number of conditions have been met. Number one, it is the building project has been approved by the state education. Number two, the building project has submitted what's known as an SA one thirty-nine, the results of its bids, to prove it bid. Number three, it has submitted a certificate of substantial completion, meaning the architect has certified that the building is safe to occupy. And number four, is the district has submitted its final cost report, showing where every penny in the capital project went. The problem is, if you're submitting them in this June, the state doesn't know that, so it doesn't include it in your aid package. So we see what I, so, so what we've done is Nancy and I have looked over your capital projects, when things are going to be submitted, when the aid will come due. You could even submit next December, it's still in that same fiscal year, remember? So the key thing is, that aid is not in your run, so we've added it here. But please look at what happens in the future. What actually happens is, the aid starts to decline, but so does your debt. So to, to your point, expense to revenue, the aid is going to go down, but so is the debt. Okay, but remember, the aid is only a portion of the debt. Okay, now, so what happens here is I'm starting to see, if you'll notice, I'm starting to see a lack of rate of increase here, but I'm starting to see a fall off here. Everything else, I think, is going to be fairly stable as far as we know. I mean, I, for instance, somebody say to me, well, maybe our excess cost aid is going to go up for those students with special needs or residential placements or something. And I would say, I don't know, somebody tell me how many of those kids you'll have in twenty twenty-six. So I stabilized it. In other words, I'm trying to keep it reasonable. So what we've got is both these aid, again, as I told you, will not be calculated till the end of the year, so there's no reason to change anything. Okay, and here's those public and private excess cost aids I talked about, where they have residential placements or high-needs kids. Then what we've got down here at the bottom here is basically your preschool, uh, uh, preschool, universal pre-K, okay, program. The problem that districts have here usually is filling the slots. In other words, there's a big incentive for the state to have, to spend more money. The problem is, this is in yellow because this money as a revenue does not go into your general fund coffers. It cannot go in there, it's not allowed. It must go in a separate line, separate fund called the special aid fund. So this cannot be part of your budget. The expenses for kindergarten now, pre-K, are in your budget. But the thing is, your expenses far outsee the aid you're going to get. And of course, what happens when you have these pre-K programs? School districts found out the hard way, they started a whole bunch of half-day programs, they didn't catch on very well, because it's a very big burden for parents to be in half-K programs. It just doesn't work. So they say, well, let's do a full-day program. Well, what they simply do is double the cost. Meanwhile, the aid's not changing. So the dilemma here is, is you're paying for the cost of the program out of your general fund, in other words, the taxpayer-based fund, but this grant money that can offset only a portion of it isn't a separate fund.
Would this, um, pre-K funding, if needed, as special, uh, special aid?
Uh, well, no, what actually will happen here is, it'll be part of ju, this is really just, is for any pre-K, any preschool, pre-K schoolers, period, whether they're special aid or general aid. But what's going to happen, and so that, just like a blanket revenue. But the cost, if it was for special aid pre-K, if you're running a special aid pre-K program, not all school districts do, actually, it can be a county obligation, all right? Uh, what happens is if you're running it yourself, you're paying the full shot, you're paying the bill. Okay, now, you can use some of this money to offset it, but I would guess that this money isn't even enough to do general aid, to be honest with you. Okay, so that's what happens. The other problem is, is that, uh, aid for pre-K is not, it, they, per kid is not very large. Here's the thing, it's interesting, when we talk about UPK, and I like talking about kindergarten too, I don't know if you're aware of this, but kindergarten and UPK are not required grades in school. Right, but I don't know what we'd do without them, but I mean, seriously, because I'm still an educator, I mean, I taught for a lot of years. So the key thing is, is that it's really kind of important, but they're not even required. So it's really kind of weird. So what I did is, I actually then just simply took that money out, so this would be your total aid picture down at the bottom. So in other words, they put it in the state aid run, and they're, and therefore the state can say they're sending you more money, but the way you'd have to spend it, it can't be counted. It's a nice, it's a nice gimmick, yes, and today, only if you call now or operate, if you're standing by. And if you buy two for a small additional shipping charge, we can get you more. All right, now, let's take a look at your reserves. So let's just talk about the reserves and go through them here. So I'm going to go through them piece by piece. Workers' compensation reserve obviously is for workers' compensation funding, and you can have multiple years of workers' compensation funding in there. Right now, it doesn't seem to move so much if you have a good experience. Some districts have been hit with some multimillion-dollar suits and their insurance, and they can't cover it all, and there's been negligence. Uh, it's kind of like, you know, he's the fifteenth guy who tripped on that sidewalk that everybody knew about, okay? So it's not a bad idea to have somebody in there. The unemployment reserve, you'll notice I got a little yellow line there on that one, and that's because I really think that one's overfunded. I, I think we could take that money and put it to better use someplace else, to be honest with you. Uh, and I think the controller would have problems with that amount of money. Now, the reason most districts put the money in there is because it's extremely flexible to get the money out of there. And, and thank God it is, because I'm going to suggest you get the money out of there. And you take it and put it someplace else, not all of it, but almost all of it.
I think we also went heavy on it during COVID because we didn't know what was going to happen.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, well, here's the other thing that happened, a lot of people did put it in there because, you know what happened? I don't know if you're aware of this, but the feds actually extended the benefits that schools had to pay. So it, it, it became like, you know, it really expensive, but that time now appears to be gone, I think there's a better use for it, my suggestion. Now, having said that, we've got reserve for retirement contributions. Now, this is an important one, this one here, I think, is really, this is one of the ones where the pension system is starting to worry me a little bit. There's another thing too, that a lot of times what happens is, there's an attempt by the pension system and the legislature to help districts help people retire. And what they do is they do what they call a pension incentive, alright? The only problem is, what the pension system makes you do is amortize the money like at eight percent. In other words, what they want you to do is pay up this person's total pension obligation as if they were gonna continue to work for another five to eight years. So, it's, it's nice if like you wanted to get rid of somebody, but it's not nice if you wanna save a lot of money necessarily, if that makes any sense. If you have to replace the person. So, for instance, in a district that's really having issues whereby we're saying, look, we gotta really improve instruction here, we've gotta get these kids' performance levels up. We gotta make sure they're social workers, we got a lot of home family issues, we got a lot of mental health issues, we got all these types of things going on. In those cases, you're probably more often than not gonna replace people when they leave. So what you do is you get breakage. But to me, it's kinda like, so, I don't know, Rick Timms will say, I, I don't know, I'm sixty-five years old, I'm a, I don't know, I'm a P E teacher, and you're gonna replace me. But I'm not married, so I have a single health care plan, and also I get replaced by someone who has the family plan, and there goes half the breakage. Half the money you save, so to speak, so these things happen. But the key thing is, is that I'm really worried, because as salaries go up, and I'm starting to now see, uh, threes, fours, four and a halves in teacher union contracts, okay? And they're compounding. So it's kinda like, you know, three fours are not twelve, they're twelve point five five compounded, if that makes any sense. So the point here is, I'm starting to see the curve escalate a little more than, than, than in the past. And the problem with the pension system is, even if the rate on the pension was stable, when the people get a raise, it's against the new amount that they make. So it tends to creep up, and the cost tends to creep up anyway. And the T R S, by the way, the T R S rate is going up at the same time as salaries are going up. So I think that's, that could be a double whammy for us. Now, we're governed by law on how fast we could raise the T R S, but if that gets out of hand, I think we could have some issues, yes?
Is the, I, my impression is that the T R S funds, you mentioned stock markets earlier, that they do remarkably well and have been growing. I've been a member for eighteen, nineteen years now, I'm a member of T R S.
Right.
And I've always been told, we keep stocking money away.
That's right, and they do, and that's why I can understand why they're charging nine point eight percent on everybody's salary in the place. Why aren't they charging five? It's because people make more money, they wait longer to retire, they live longer, and they get COLA increases. And that stock market still is not keeping up. Okay?
Interesting.
It is a huge volume of people. I, I, you can't believe, well, think of it this way. Uh, in most communities in New York, seriously, not necessarily the city of Oswego, but think about it. In many rural communities, almost everybody there is a teacher. I mean, you really start thinking about it, almost everybody knows a teacher. I mean, there, there's teachers all over the place. And so what happens, but there's a huge cadre of retired teachers, of which I am proud to say, I am one. And I am taking from the system, so thank you for paying into it, but I paid into it for many years too. But the key thing is, is that, you know, people used to retire at fifty-five on the nose, they were making forty thousand bucks. Right? Long Island, you notice the average teacher salary in Long Island is over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, average, not even the top, I mean, the average. Okay, so what happens is, these people get pensions. So this is the thing that's driving this up here.
Can I ask a follow-up then? Do you have a guesstimate of when you see this starting to take effect? Because when I look at the last five years of what we've spent, um, the highest was actually the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen year. We've actually had many years lower than that over the last five years.
In our estimates, I've actually flattened it, I've not increased the rate at all.
Okay.
In our, in the estimates I'm gonna give.
So in these estimates?
The only thing that's gonna go up is the salaries.
Okay, so, but so for the foreseeable future, the rates are?
I, I actually stabilized your rate.
The amount that we spend is roughly?
Yeah, because I don't know where they're going, I'm worried about it, but I just kept it stable.
Thank you.
Sure. See, what I don't wanna do is, I don't wanna create doom and gloom, if it occurs naturally, fine, but other than that, I'm trying to stabilize. Right? I mean, you know, if someone falls off the cliff, huh, they fell, but I mean, I'm not pushing anybody. Alright. Alright, but it's early, it's early in the evening. Alright, so here we go, so, uh, property loss, you got nothing in there, there's really no real reason, I think your district at this point has to have anything in property loss. Liability claims, you're self-insured in health insurance, and you've been hit with some big claims in the last couple of years. And I gotta tell you, this is starting to be the bane of everybody's existence. I have districts, I'm actually estimating their health insurance going up, and some of them are going up at like twelve, ten percent. And they say, geez, I said, that's an awful lot, they say, yeah, for the last three or four years, we were only doing one, two, three percent. All of a sudden, out of the blue, we get killed with, you know, all these big claims and issues and all kinds of things. And then some of them are using up their own reserves. Now, you're self-funded, but this is your insurance policy against those types of issues. And it's, it's, it's anyone's guess at exactly how much money you need here. But the key thing is, is remember, if you run out of that money, there's just actually no other way to get any other money. Your, your system will go belly out. Okay? Uh, the insurance reserve, again, nothing in there, no need to, tax surcharge. Now, tax surcharge, the only thing I'd say about your tax surcharge reserve is this. And that is, is that I wish, I wish that number had changed every year. Because what we should be really doing is reevaluating our tax surcharge. Okay, but the problem we have in most cases is the assessors hanging on to all the documents, it's hard to get everything, and then they wanna guess, and nobody knows. And everybody's afraid to give somebody else a number or something like that. So the suggestion I have is you do have school attorneys, and they should be in possession of these documents as well. And I would always ask for a, a recommendation from your school attorney on what you should have in your tax surcharge. Okay, this, this leaves your guesswork out of it. Okay? Now, uh, reserve, oh, let me, before I, let me back up here. Employee benefit accrued liability, we call it E B L A R. We, we screw up all the initials and make a name out of it, that's what educators do. So we call it E B L A R, this is used for unused sick personal vacation days. Should there be a run on your bank for unused sick personal vacation days, in other words, you have a number of people retire, and the district has to pay for them. That's the only purpose this reserve can, can serve. It's, uh, it's governed under General Municipal Law Six P. And it's a misdemeanor to misuse it, your district has not misused it, and it does, it does have a liability. Your accountants constantly review this, is, in your accountant statements, saying that you should have this kind of money. Then the next one is capital reserve. So we have here an, an amount for a ten million dollar capital reserve, we've now took our fund balance from the prior year, and we've now gone from seventy-five thousand to five million. Let me explain things about capital reserves, you'll notice there's a big box around all capital reserves, and I've got a list of them. See, what people don't understand is, a capital reserve is something that can actually flatten out your budget, and actually flatten out taxpayer impact. Because if you wanna try and keep taxes down and reasonable without fluctuating, capital reserves in many ways are the way to do it. Okay? And that's when I talk about strategic planning, think ahead. What are we gonna need when, and how much is it gonna cost? And I don't mean how much is it gonna cost now, how much is it gonna cost then? I do a lot of work with capital projects, and it always kills me when all of a sudden somebody hands me the building condition survey, and they say, well, we wanna do these things. And I said, okay, this is the scope of work, how much you wanna spend? They say, we're twenty million, I said, where'd you get the number? We took it out of the building condition survey. When was the building condition survey? Well, it was done last year. Okay, when's the building project gonna be done? Well, probably finish it up by twenty twenty-four. I wanna know how much all those things are gonna cost in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Not now, but not when the building condition survey was done. So the big deal is, you've gotta find out how much things are gonna cost, not how much they do cost. That's really the key. Now, yes?
You mentioned, you, you mentioned property tax fluctuations as part of this. Um, do we do pretty good on that?
Not bad, yeah. Not bad, not bad. But, but I think there's ways we can actually improve it, because I, I see some costs going up in the future, and I just wanna make sure you can continue to do it.
Okay, yeah, they did, they looked like they were all single-digit percents for the most of the years.
Oh, that doesn't matter, I don't care what percent it is. No, doesn't matter. No, the reason it doesn't matter, because it depends on what the district's trying to accomplish.
When I think of fluctuation, I think of up and down, which.
Right, well, that's what I'm trying to say, I like it stable, because what I wanna do is plan accordingly, so all of a sudden, the district hasn't thought of some bright idea, and drive it up out of the blue, and then drive it back down. That's what I'm trying to avoid. So, capital reserves, so let's talk capital reserves in general. Capital reserves, all capital reserves are what they call thirty-six fifty-one reserves, education law thirty-six fifty-one. And they are required to be voter-approved. You have to be voter-approved to get the capital reserve and create it, you have to have voter approval to expend money from the capital reserve. So somebody says, geez, well, you know, it just seems like a lot of work. Yeah, but to me, I think it's keeping faith with the community. First of all, you're declaring that you're gonna save money for a specific purpose, to show that you're thinking ahead, so that you don't have those ups and downs. So I think that's, that's a way to, to get some transparency and show faith. And then when you ask them to spend the money, you're then showing them that you're using the money for the purpose you told them you're gonna use it for. So I think that's keeping faith with the people that are helping pay for this. Now, the capital reserve, every capital reserve resolution has to be passed by the voters, and has all the same requirements of the budget. You know, the forty-five, the forty-nine day notification in the paper and all the rest of this. You always have the resolution written by your school attorney to indemnify the district and the board. Should there be any challenge or mistake, the board cannot then be charged with neglect or something like that. Alright. Each capital reserve resolution has four elements, four elements. The first element, what's the purpose of the reserve? And what's the reserve for? So, if you notice, this capital reserve here is a capital reserve for capital construction. Okay? So a lot of times, what you're seeing in the resolution for capital construction, including site work, and we're working on the building, and you know, done roofs and other modifications, furniture, some furniture, so it has a list like that. So, the other local capital reserve is buses. Now, I'm bringing up buses for a specific purpose, and I got a little note down here at the bottom. That right now, the hypothetical plan is, of course, nothing's etched in stone until actually it starts to occur. Would be to buy about eight million dollars worth of buses in the next seven years. Now, of course, when Nancy and I talked about this, this was before the legislature and its infinite wisdom decided to go to electric buses. So you gotta be a little forgiving here for both of us. But the key thing is, eight million dollars, and you bond for the buses. Now, I am not, so let me have a disclaimer now, I am not your financial advisor, okay? I'm just a consultant doing a long-range plan. We do those services, but I am not yours. If I was yours and you were bonding for the buses, you would pay me to go get the bond. Then you would pay interest on the bond. Right? For five years. Okay, whatever period you wanted, the state aid would come in over five years. So you're paying me, and you're paying interest. If you have excess fund balance, or you had a reserve where you could buy the bus cash, think of me walking in and saying, okay, I got my little twenty-seventeen Highlander out there. And now I wanna buy a twenty-twenty-two Highlander. How much money could I save if I walked into dealership and handed them the money, rather than went and borrowed the money? So if we're trying to be more efficient and more effective, to me, it would be pay cash, because cash is king. Makes sense? Therefore, you're not paying me, if I was your financial advisor, whoever yours is, you're paying them to go get money that you actually have money, you could probably go buy the bus. Now, the dilemma is, if we're gonna spend eight million dollars over seven years, that's a good chunk of change, that's a little over a million on average per year, right? So the big thing is, is can you accumulate a million dollars a year and ask the voters to put this into a reserve? Say maybe five, I'm gonna make something, five million dollars for five years? And then have them release the money, go pay cash, and buy your bus, and be done with it. You still get, you would get aid, by the way, as if you borrowed the money. So you would actually make money. So to me, that would be, that's what I'm saying, is strategic long range, and to me, it all adds up. Somebody said, well, what have I only saved, about ten thousand bucks a year, twenty thousand bucks a year? I don't know, how many books is that? How many field trip runs is that? Is, what portion of a social worker is that, or a mental health or a behavioral specialist is that? To me, everything equates to the educational program, now you should, now you have more money for them, which is the purpose of the school, yes?
So, that doesn't affect our state aid at all, which is wonderful to hear. Um, that philosophy then should carry over to other things that we would consider bonding, as long as it doesn't affect any kind of aid coming back. Because we've been talking about a lighting efficiency study recently, where the estimate costs, we'll make money over the fifteen or eighteen years. But the bond percent was like three and a half percent. Right, and so if that doesn't affect state aid, what you're saying is that if we could not bond or borrow less of it, that that ultimately would save us money?
I have, I have a district, yes. The short answer is yes, but there's some, some pieces that we gotta work on. I've got a district right now that got in one heck of a lot of problems with the controller, I mean, a lot of problems. Your three million dollars? I want you to picture fifteen million dollars. A district a quarter your size. And that's because they were unaware that they could put the money in a capital reserve for capital, we are now doing a twenty-six million dollar cash capital project. They're gonna get interest-free capital project. But they're gonna get state aid as if they paid interest on the twenty-six million dollars for fifteen years. But the controller wanted to kill them. So what we're gonna do is, we now are asking for, actually, it wasn't, it wasn't in unemployment, where was it? It was in retirement, here's what it was, it was in retirement contributions. We have to get the voter approval to move it out of retirement, to move it into cash. Exceed the four percent that the controller's killing us over, and then immediately turn around and get a, a resolution underneath it for the, to, to jettison the cash. Controller says, well, it's really, you know, we should, can't we wait a couple of years? No, because then the twenty-six million dollar project becomes twenty-eight million. So go ahead, write me up. But we're gonna, we're gonna save the taxpayers a bundle, we're gonna get this right, and by the way, I'm, we're starting a new capital reserve to do this correctly, either my new client. Okay, but just see the point. So you can get in trouble a lot, real quick. So the idea is, so now, let's keep going with this capital reserve. The second element, after the purpose, is you have to say how long the reserve will last. Five to ten years is usually the case, some people do fifteen, depending upon what you're planning. The third is how much the reserve deposits will add up to, in other words, what they call the sum total of deposits. So let me give you an example, say we started a five million dollar capital reserve for ten years. We start putting money in it, we got four million in it, we decide to do a little capital project, so we take a million out, leaving three in. Everybody with me? Why don't anybody lost in the man? Can we put two in to get to the five? No, because then the sum total of deposits would have been six. But it can accrue interest. So here, you could put it in an interest-bearing account, have it accrue interest. Right now, interest rates are like, no good. But I'm sure they're gonna be going up sooner or later, but the truth of it is, your money will be making money at the same time. Okay? So, that would be that. And the last is, what's the source of funds? Where's this money coming from? You put it in the reserve. Must come from state aid or excess funds, surplus funds designated by the board. So if you have no excess funds and keep spending everything out, you cannot reserve. So in other words, you made it so that your game plan will not work, so you have to have funds. So those are the four elements. But to me, it's like, maybe we ought to start thinking about buses. Maybe we ought to start thinking about vehicles, because stake-rack trucks, equipment trucks, you know, plows, the big salter fan, this stuff. What's the plan for the district? Somebody said, well, I don't know, we've thought about it, well, we should, we gotta stop thinking about it, we actually should have a plan. So I would say, over the next few months, this is what you might probably wanna come up with, come up with a plan. And when can you vote on these capital reserves? You can vote on it anytime you want, with proper public notification. I never vote on anything in a school district, I never recommend September, no, uh, August, September, October, ever. Tax collection season. Right? So, the key thing is, is I usually November, December, something, but most of these are usually done in May's, when they do the budget. You'll notice I got one for technology, and I already mentioned this earlier in my presentation. What about all those, uh, computers and laptops and iPads, they, they wear out? My computer the other day just automatically updated to another Windows system, right? Thank God it's not that old. But the other one I had sitting next to me cannot update anymore, so now it doesn't work the same programs the same way. So the thing is, you have to replace them, in a district this size, it's a good chunk of change. So what's the plan to replace all the tech in the entire district? I in here, came in here, and I, I said, here, I gotta check the weather, see what my drive home looks like, I can't even get a signal in here. Really? A school district? I saved some money for that. Okay. Next, classroom furniture, equipment, things like that. Some places are replacing, say, the, the, the whiteboards or the permeating board, things like this, all those types of things. Okay, so there's a whole bunch of stuff. By the way, the TVs like this come like twice that size. Okay, so the key thing here is, what do you think you're gonna be playing, what, what are your big expenses going online? Now, why do I say that they help you with the budget and the tax fluctuation? Because then they're not part of the budget. All of a sudden, we didn't buy five hundred thousand dollars worth of computers one year in the budget, we just bought them out of the reserve. So we're not giving tax for them. You already, actually, if you collected the money already. So to me, capital reserves, they always help out. Now, the things that are aid-eligible, technology, for instance, somebody started a capital reserve a couple of years ago. Somebody started a capital reserve a couple of years ago that we worked with, they're buying five hundred thousand this year out of BOSI's. So guess what? They're taking the five hundred thousand dollars out, they're going to walk over and hand to BOSI's, they're going to buy the laptops, and they're going to get BOSI's aid on the laptops. So to me, I think, long-term, we got, remember how I said operational is day by day? Strategic is where do we want to be? That's what I think we've got to start thinking about. Okay, now, reserve for repairs, you have nothing in there, and to be honest with you, I hate that reserve. Uh, only because it's so restrictive. And by the way, if you repair anything, it's not aidable. Okay, just keep that in mind, it's not aidable. And then reserve for debt. You don't have a reserve for debt. That's if you sold the building, uh, and you owed money still on the building from a capital project. You have to put the proceeds in there and resolve the debt from there. But the last one is tax reduction for nuclear tax stabilization. I've never seen a district that had a power plant in it that didn't have money in there.
Why?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead. I mean, we've tried to get the legislation changed so that we can fund it, so I was going to ask that question. And, and I heard in a recent conference, they have no intention of changing that, really. So what alternatives do we have in order to do it outside of getting an escalating pilot? Which, you know, we don't have for another three years.
Yeah, you don't have, you don't have a lot of choices, because I think at the beginning of the pilot, you could have started one probably, I think, at the beginning. But you can't, once the pilot's stable. At the acquisition of the pilot, you can, but not afterwards. So it's a problem.
Right. Well, the legislation had said that basically if it's a static pilot, a stable pilot, or decreasing, you can't, it can only be an increasing pilot in order to fund.
That's right, definitely said, when the pilot starts, it's, that's the first payment up.
Okay, oh, okay, so just in that, but would we only be for that year?
So, no, no, once you start it, then you start pilot.
Then we're open up.
Okay. So the key thing here is, this does limit your ability to move some stuff around. Something tells me that if we were to really work this out, if we could get the capital reserves all working right, I think, and part of the money will come from unemployment, by the way. Uh, the key thing is, is you may be out of compliance for a couple of years until this thing works out. But if the pilot goes away, your problems are actually solved. Because you will not have any money.
The, the one thing I did want to say is, not that it's going to be official, it's not going to be as, as significant as it, it looks, in the sense that nine mile one and nine mile two. Nine mile one is the one that would be decommissioned, two would stay online. So it wouldn't be a, it would be a gradual cliff, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be running right off the edge.
We got a cliff here, just to show you what happens, because I don't know, we don't know what's going to happen. But I'm going to just show you the effect of when it drops, that type of thing. So, and, you know, the, the amount that it drops, you'll have to kind of gauge yourself. But my examples are going to be when it goes. Okay? Yes?
So I just want to ask a follow-up question to make sure, because I think maybe I've understood escalating pilot differently from the way you just said it. So hypothetically, if our first pilot was thirty million, and now we have twenty-five million, we're in a decreasing pilot. But you're saying the first year of our new lower pilot is...
No, not the first year of a new lower pilot, first year of a new, new pilot. New pilot. The first year the pilot arrives, it just went up from zero to something.
Okay, even if we had a, a pilot payment, like, let's say it ends in twenty-twenty-two, we have a new pilot going in in twenty-twenty-three that year, twenty-twenty-three counts as...
If it goes up, if it goes up.
If it goes up from what twenty-twenty-two was. Okay, but that's not happening.
Right, right, that's the problem, that'd be after.
So now, that's, that's for an individual pilot, or can it be for the totality of your pilot?
No, it should be, it should be, it's for really a nuclear pilot. It's really for a nuclear power plant, it's not any pilot.
Because I did see that our pilot went up a little bit for the current year we're in right now.
Right.
Um, but, okay.
But you have a, you have an accumulation of pilots.
Right, and that's why I asked if it was for...
No, no, just the, just the nuclear part.
So my second question is, at, at some point, um, and I, you know, I don't know where you're going next, you've gone through all of our reserves here very nicely. I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to some of the, um, reserves in which we also fund on an annual basis, through line items, through our regular budgeting system.
Yeah, let's call it what they call a planned balance. Uh, so what happens is, you're allowed to have planned balance. For instance, like, a lot of times what will happen is, um, uh, districts can actually have a budget item to plan to build the reserve. That's called a planned balance.
Okay, I guess what I'm talking about is like, we have a TRS line item, we have an ERS line item, we have an unemployment line item, and we budget a certain amount in. There was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for unemployment, budgeted into that line item for this year. So that's in addition to that three-point-two million you said we need to whittle down.
Right, so what happens here is, what you're supposed to be doing is, you're, you're supposed to be budgeting some reasonable expectation in terms of what the cost will be. So that should be budgeted. Then, the purpose of the reserve is, should the actual bill come up, because it's an estimate, and you don't know the real cost until the school year's already started, uh, if, if it exceeds that amount, you can then go take the amount you need to balance the payment from the reserve. So the reserve is what they, like a rainy day fund, basically, for that purpose. That's what it's for. And you're allowed, in, in, uh, many of these reserves, two to three years' worth of full funding. Because another thing that happens too, in some districts, not necessarily yours per se, but in some districts, what happens is they tend to raid reserves, or, excuse me, tend to raid, well, I call it raid, uh, raid, uh, budget codes to pay for other things that were not budgeted. So that's the worry as well. So I'm a teenager. All right, so that takes care of the reserves. Now, I, I don't know if you're aware of this, I'm not going to read all this to you, because you can read it on your own page here, but, um, newspapers call at a time and ask me for state aid stuff, and this is the Buffalo News article. I just took some excerpts out from Barbo Bryan's article on, on April fourteenth, we talked about the electric buses. And this is why I'm worried. If you just, let's just kind of scoop through and read the parts that are in bold, how's that, just for, for brevity? There are about fifty thousand school buses in New York. So we're going to try and replace fifty thousand school buses in seven years. Okay? Start in seven years. Ramping up production is one key, another is cost. Electric bus cost two to three times the normal bus, Rick Timm said, education, that's me. It's something that Bethlehem knows well. What they did is, they called up the Bethlehem School System, who started buying electric buses. And by the way, they're going to buy one more in this coming year. The only problem is, they got like a fleet of a hundred and sixteen of them. Okay? Now, if you keep reading, Bethlehem expected the bus ride, ride by January, but now it won't come in until June. So now they've got to keep the old bus going. Okay? Next, the list price of seventy-passenger buses in Bethlehem was three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And the district received a grant from New York State Energy Research Development Authority for two hundred thousand for each bus, for a net cost of one sixty-three, Johnson said, which is the guy from Bethlehem. That is really still thirty thousand dollars more than you'd be paying for your bus. But here's the part that kills me. I just love this stuff. The state before passed its state budget, issued a five-year projection on its own budget, saying it would be balanced for almost the first time in history. I'm exaggerating, but it's been a long time. Okay, probably before I was born. But here's the problem. In this new budget, it's like Christmas in April. Hundred million more for this, billion more for that, billion more for this, and we're paying all these districts all this money. You understand what I'm getting at? So I don't think that's going to make it. Where do you think the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority gets its money? Yeah, the state. So to me, that's why, remember I showed you your state aid, like the rate of increase, I only put it at three percent of that foundation? That's why I'm worried. Because when you start reading all these articles, now they're going to support all this buying of buses that nobody thought of until last week. Is everybody catching on here?
It's a mess.
Right, so comparable diesel buses, a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty. So he's got the grant for the first couple of buses, what's he going to do after that? He can't keep getting the grant every single year. Bethlehem, by the way, is a wealthy school district. All right? Now, the district estimated it would cost thirty-seven thousand less to operate the bus versus these over a dozen years. Oh, boy, a dozen years. Okay, but since it doesn't have the buses yet, doesn't have actual data, and the electricity needed for it. The big problem now is, here's what's going on in my world, and I think Chris could tell you more about this than I can. We don't think there's enough juice out there to run these buses. I don't think New York has the infrastructure so everybody can plug in all these buses at once. I think this is going to be a real, this is like a good idea before its time. You know? So that's what I'm worried about. Listen, look at it. The state is including five hundred million in Environmental Bond Act. They're going to help us with five hundred million. The state aid increase this year is two billion dollars, what's five hundred million? Nothing. But guess what? Guess where it's going to come from? It's all dependent upon a bond act going before the voters in November. So we're making you buy the buses, we're promising you five hundred million if the voters say okay. This would be like, well, we're going to tell you we're going to pass your taxes, but we don't know if I'm going to pay my tax bill. So this, you've got to be, Congress is also providing five billion over five years. Wait a minute, these things have got to last twelve. Five billion over fifty states, three hundred and thirty million people. Oh, this is going to go far. So, you know, we are going to get a buck fifty. Then there's the workforce. I'll make you a bet, if we walked over to bus garage right now, we'd be looking at your Macan's, and they'd be going, I don't know. I think buses, I don't know. This is going to be the same phenomenon my grandfather faced when he saw his first automobile, and it didn't have a hoof. State law also allows districts to apply for a one-time extension up to twenty-four months. So if you can't do it in the time period we told you, we'll give you two, two years more to do it, but you're still going to get it done. But you've got to prove you can't do it. What's the proof that you can't do it? Is that you won't do it? This really has me worried, because to me, I think to turn over electric while environmentally maybe somewhere, some, at least it'd be a real gross experience, problem act for school districts, Tim said. I think this is like an understatement if I ever had to make one. Well, not to be outdone, I've got another one in here for you. Here's the one from the Times-June in Albany. And it cites some of the similar things, but again, it starts talking about, this guy is the head of the school business officials in New York State, Brian Shisnacki, this guy's brilliant, he's terrific. And he's going, are you kidding me? How are we going to do this? So you can read that article, if you suffer from insomnia, this will put you out. So use this for tonight, okay? But if you go to the last page here, the logs was deflected, look at this. Bethlehem last year became one of the first in the state. Look at this, diesel, well, the district secured a million for the, a truck driver voucher incentive program. Where do you think the money came from for that? So this is why I worry. I'm paid to worry. In other words, it, look, it's kind of like this, you know, everybody, everybody thought everything was going great till COVID hit, and all these people became unemployed. You know, what I'm seeing here is, everything was going great, but all of a sudden we had to do this. I'm not opposed to doing this, if there's money to do this and a wherewithal to do it, but it just seems to me to be a heavy lift. By the way, Bethlehem has a bus proposition, two hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure, for charging stations. The state will aid that too. Where's all this state money coming from? Well, see, what I'm worried about is, if they start lowering, you don't get three percent, you only get one percent of that foundation aid now, because we've got to do this, that's what I'm worried about. I don't, I just don't, I'm not trusting five years out, considering your kids are really important, and you've got to maintain this, this educational program. So this is really what I'm worried about. This is one of the big ones. And then it goes on and on, zero emissions fleet. So by twenty-thirty-five, there's not allowed to be a non-electric bus on the road in any school district by twenty-thirty-five. So there you go. So, by the way, they said stations, but don't worry. You know, you, right now, you can amortize a bus for five years. So don't worry, they cost more, no problem, you can amortize it for twelve. That's like your mortgage broker when you go buy a house, saying, geez, I'm having trouble making a fifteen-year payments. Well, let's make them thirty. Make it thirty, lower your payments. Now you can pay double for the house. Everybody catch the drift here? So here's what I did, I just made a quick little spreadsheet up just to kind of illustrate the point. So what I did is, here's, uh, here's, what we did is, we took some, I took some buses that we estimated here for here. These aren't etched in stone by any means, but just to kind of give you an idea. So we buy one point one-two-five million this year, next year one point three, we buy another bus more. Plus, we got a little inflation factor here of four percent, because diesel buses tend to be going up four or five percent each year. Now, we're bonding for them, here's the number of buses, I hypothetically made that up. Here would be a similar cost of electric. Ching, ching. Okay? Next one. Say you got the grant, look at eight, compared to eight, you're only five hundred thousand dollars more. It's not like you don't have anything else to spend your money on. And then here, the value of the grant, so you'd have ten million, so you would take it in the difference, and then the net cost of the grant. But then I started saying, okay, what about the electric bus? Is that going to be subject to any inflation? So I fit three percent on the electric bus, in other words, less than the diesel bus to make it look better. And now, as you can see, there's your eight million versus twenty-point-seven. You'd never be ten instead of eight, so you're going to spend two million dollars more if you could do the same schedule you've got hypothetically planned for the next seven years, if you're doing electric. You will get aid.
So the only thing I would add to that, though, is that the maintenance cost for those vehicles is much less.
Right.
Right, because you don't need to be changing the, so I think labor costs will go down. Like, I get your concern, but, and they do, they last a lot longer, because there's many fewer moving parts.
I, like I said, I am not opposed to this at all. I mean, in fact, I think it's a great idea. I just am worried about the money for you. That's what I'm worried, because you've got to front the money. So sooner or later, you will save money. But there's also a, a portion in the statute, excuse me, in the statute that says you're not supposed to decrease staff by buying these buses. So I don't know what labor you're going to save.
Well, we'll save it in parts.
Let's just hope it gets amended over time. Okay? But you, you're correct, you're correct. All right, so, anyway, so that's what, see why I worry? You see, I'm trying to think of things other people don't think of, I think that's part of my job. All right. Now, these are not etched in stone, these are just examples, right? But they do give you the flavor of how the thing works. All right. And this is, of course, if you can keep the grant coming in, right? Over and over and over again, this grant. All right. Now, let's go through some scenarios. So what I've got here is a scenario one. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to get, I'm going to take out a whole bunch of stuff. First of all, let's go through the assumptions. You, you, I think you're aiming for probably a zero percent tax increase if you can get it. So I put zeros right across the board, taxes won't move. So let's see what happens if we never increase taxes until after twenty-six, twenty-seven. Okay? So there it is, frozen, red line. Next one. Here's your pilot. Now, I've eliminated your pilot, we think we're going to end up with this huge decrease around twenty-five, twenty-six. I've eliminated it, Tom, you can see what I've done here, just illustrated it. So what I've done is, I've got an overall change, and then I've got a change in the last three years. So you can see that some of these things are going to happen in the out years. In other words, I think in the next three years, you're probably going to be in fantastic shape. Seriously. I'm worried about years four and fives, which worried me. That pilot and these, and the buses, and your escalating cost of contractual expenses. That's what I'm worried about, okay? Because they build it. All right, next, here's your state aid from the state aid tab, remember I showed you the state aid? Then here's your building aid, you've got that bump in there for your building aid. And then down here is your total revenues going across. And as you can see, your total revenues, because you've got the state aid increasing, see how the state aid is increasing here? But the pilot, it may go away, so technically, the difference between overall, the revenues are going down about six million dollars, but hypothetically, in the last three years, it would be twenty-one, because they took the pilot out, the pilot goes away. Showing you the effect of a pilot. Okay, because it is twenty-eight percent of your, your income. Right? All right, so we got that. So what I did then is, I've got a page here, so follow along up here if you can, I know you're trying to read both of them, but this way here, I can give it to you in pieces. What I've got here is, I'm carrying over right up top here, the revenues from the previous page, in that, in that scenario. Okay, so you don't have to go looking back and forth. Then what we've got here is our expenses. Now, what we've got as expenses, we took major categories, because we're not going to count pencils, right? Otherwise, we'd be here the rest of our life. So we've got general support. What's in general support for those of you who can't remember the uniform system of account codes? It would be, uh, it would be the board, ten-ten codes, they call it, the superintendent's office and everybody that works there, which would be twelve-forty codes, thirteen-tens, which would be the business office, your attorneys are in there. 13-10s, which would be the business office, your attorneys are in there. But the biggest parts of these really are operations and maintenance. Those are the people. So I divided into salaries and then other. Definition of other, everything but salaries. Okay? And, and other is your utilities. Your utilities. So I think it was a mention here about looking at energy efficiency perhaps, okay? All right. So this is utilities. Now, then instruction is everybody in what they call the 2000 codes. So this would be principals and anybody who works with a kid. Guidance counselors, social workers, teachers, uh, teacher aides, teacher assistants. All those people are in the instructional codes. And then what we've got is others, everything but. But the big part of this, that is a real big cost of your budget, is the students with special needs in both these programs. Okay? It is in every district. Every district. It's the biggest part. And then what we've got is transportation, of course. People versus, you know, the equipment, supplies, materials, oil, and so on. Or soon-to-be batteries, I guess. All right, so whatever. So that's what we've got. And what we're trying to do is take a look at your contractual expenses, move them accordingly, and what we plan to buy over time based on some inflationary factor. Then we've got the employment benefits, here's retirement. In other words, both pension systems, and we've got social security, function of salary, workers' compensation, health insurance, and other. Everybody with me so far? All right, so what happens is, we add this all up, and bingo, what we've got here is, the bottom line here is, would be your expenses. So we're always trying to compare your expenses to your revenues, right? And the difference between them would be the appropriate fund balance. Now, we've got a couple of things that are important here. One is, is that I told you we're gonna get a big shot of building aid back, remember, for your emergency project? Well, then you've gotta refill your, your, your capital fund. So that, that's this expenditure right here, just standing out there. If you'll notice, there's zeros across here, all the way to here. See the zeros under rand tan? Rand tan is revenue anticipation note and tax anticipation note. Why would I put them down if they were zeros? Easy, because it shows the district is healthy. It's a demonstration of district health. A rand and a tan, revenue anticipation note, means you don't have enough cash flow to pay everybody, so you have to go borrow money to operate. You don't, you're in great shape. So you don't. But the dilemma is going to be, is if you start looking at these numbers top over bottom, you see that there's gonna be a growing difference by the time we get to the last two years, if that pilot heads south, or any, a bunch of pilots head south. Remember, this is a scenario. So what I do is, now we have our carryover. Remember the $2 million I showed you on the first slide with the ST3? Here's our $2 million carryover. Well, I actually had completed this whole study, and then I had to change it, because the budget was changing for your approval. And apparently, what we did is we lowered the budget. But by lowering the budget, we didn't take anything out of it, other than the fund balance in it. Remains the only I just said. In other words, what we did is, we made the budget much more accurate to our expectation. So therefore, next year, this 392 will be the carryover, not 2 million. Now, that's not necessarily bad at all, hypothetically, okay? As long as you've got enough money to operate the district, long-term. All right? Now, if you'll notice, you'll start to see a big 8 million, then a 12 million, and a 3, and a 3. Now, where do these come from? These come from, and watch this please carefully, these come from these numbers down here. Now, I'm gonna go through these numbers down here to show you how they work. So I'm gonna actually have, put, hit buttons to show you how every part works, okay? So if I get a heavier attention here. The first thing that happens is, is we try and find out the difference. This bottom line is the difference between your expected revenues and your expected expenses. When the number is black, that means your revenues exceed your expenses. What a problem to have, that's great. Terrific. But when the number is red, that means your expenses exceed your revenues. And remember, in this scenario, I've got your pilots heading south. So what actually happens here is, this is where the appropriate fund balance comes from. So here you don't need an appropriate fund balance, because you actually have fund balance. Here you don't need it. But here you would be about 19 million short in this scenario. So that means that what Nancy would have to do is pledge 19 million against the previous year's budget. In other words, not spend it, in other words, put it aside. Appropriated, they call it, okay? So what happens then though is, is that it would go up here. And then what would happen is, we would then have, see this 19 million? It's, it's gonna take, we're already bringing over $392,000. Where are we getting the 19 million from? Anybody know? Easy. We're gonna decrease the reserves. I'm gonna take it right out of your reserves. Now, for the purposes of this, to keep it fairly simple, is, any money that you have in cash that isn't currently in a reserve, I'd make, pretend that it is, okay, to get the number. But once those pilots go, they, if they go to this volume, you're gonna be short 19 million. You wouldn't have to tap your reserves 19 million. Meanwhile, there's a number right up here called the, the unassigned fund balance, and that's that 4% limit you're allowed to have. You'll notice that's escalating, because your budget's escalating. Because 4% of the next year's budget is a bigger number. So what this spreadsheet is doing, is taking money from the reserves to make sure that you can keep that cash. All right? And also balance your budget. But look what happens in the last year. You need another 21 million. You don't have 20 million, 1 million, you only have 11. So you'll see a red number here, 4,800,000. Everybody see the red 4,800,000? That's how much you will be in the hole. In deficit, if this scenario were to come true. Everybody with me? So in other words, this is a perfect example of where a district is unbelievably healthy right now. But if that pilot, this magnitude goes south, the only place you can get the money of your own, is to take it from yourself. By the way, did I mention to you that almost all those reserves, you can't liquidate like that? It would be illegal. I can do it on paper, but it can't really happen. So, remember what I said, I made kind of a quick remark? It's kinda like, if this is 28% of your revenue goes south, say 24% of it or 25% of it, it's kinda like hypothetically, or hypocritically, or using hyperbole, lining everybody up, count off by fours, all the ones go home and don't come back. Devastating to your program. Just, it would be devastating. So that's a scenario. Let's try another. So this is a work. Now, this time, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna increase your taxes after this year by 1.99% every year, whether you need to or want to or not. Just to say we're getting more money. So what I did is, if you'll notice, the taxes are going up, and you got another bunch of taxes, 2 million bucks over the period of time. See it? All right, right here. But then I took out your, your pilots again, to see if, if we could survive with 2%. And then what I got is your state aid's still running, okay? Your billing aid's still running, but you'll notice the billing aid's going down, remember? Billing aid's going down, so that's revenue going down. Okay, so there's our total revenues at the bottom, the red box. Everybody with me? We can go faster, because we've already done one. All right, now, next page, boom, bring it over to revenue. And I got over my expenses now, I haven't changed my expenses. Now, I still got my state carryover, but look what happens now. Now, what's gonna happen is, if you'll notice, let's focus in on, you will have $67,000 in your reserves, but you will have your 4.2 million dollars in cash. So in other words, if the pilots go south to this magnitude, and every year after this year, you collect 2% more in taxes, all other things being equal, still running, you're still gonna, you're gonna be broke, not in 26, 27. You'll be broke in 27. 28. Actually, you will be broke then. You'll notice I got this thing here? We would actually have to add an expense there, cuz I don't think you're gonna make payroll. You will not be payroll. If you'll notice, look at your salaries. So let's add up the salaries. Let's, I don't pick anywhere, let's go right now. 6.5, 31, 32, right? So say, say 38, and 240, you got $40 million with the salaries. You got $4 million in the bank, how's that work? So that's not gonna work. Okay? All right, let's try another scenario. What do we gotta do to get those reserves back to 20 million bucks? Okay? Well, I'll show you what we gotta do. You'd have to have the last two years 21% tax rate increases. And I think we can get those reserves back. If you look at the last page, there's 20 million at the start of it. 20 million? 20 million? If that pilot goes south. So what's my recommendation? My recommendation is, you gotta start saving your money in case that pilot goes south, that's number one. Number two. If I were you, I would engage your attorney right away to find out how that pilot's gonna work, when it's gonna go, how much of it's gonna go, how it's gonna go, and whether or not you can renew or get that pilot back.
The negotiations on that are, I believe, what, Nancy? Do you know what our next negotiation is?
They should be coming up shortly.
They were five-year, we're in, currently in a five-year. And then it's scheduled to go down in '28 or '29, nine mile one. So there will be one negotiation prior to that. We need that, that negotiation definitely to get an escalating pilot.
There you go.
Correct?
Correct. So, so to my point is, is that obviously, these are worst-case scenarios, because you're so healthy now, I'm trying to figure out what can go wrong. So the key thing is, as long as you can engage in that thing and actually start securing more information, we can actually do a better job of your estimating. And maybe it'll come out rosy or I'm praying, I hope, certainly. But the key thing is, until you get it, we don't know. Right? So to keep, to, to me, I just don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater before, you know, tragedy strikes, or what we don't know is coming. And considering it's such a huge part of your revenues, I think what we gotta start doing is getting strategic and really, really push the negotiations along to find out sooner than later. Because the problem is, I pointed out, obviously, nobody's gonna charge 20% taxes or anything like that. But the key thing is, is that what happens is, you then run out of time to make an adjustment. And you'll be forced to do something drastic. And that's what I'm trying to have you avoid. Does that make sense? So the key thing is, is that, is any of this necessarily gonna have to come true? No. If the pilot stays reasonably healthy. But here's the thing, even if you lost 3 or 4 million of the pilot, it's gonna be a problem. If not in '26, '27, thereafter.
So you said, start saving now. Um, earlier, you said that, um, you really just can't put a whole bunch of money into some of these accounts and just take it all out. You said you could do it on paper, but legally, you can't do it.
Right, so.
So how do you make it work when you don't have the ability to put it into a nuke pilot right now, which we don't?
Right.
How do we save money?
Well, I think one of the things you start doing is this capital reserve business. I think we start building some capital reserves. So there's specific purposes that will then take money off the table in your budget over time.
So things like buying whiteboards right now, or other things that we have as a budget?
Long-term, right. Everything long-term, but I mean, every big-ticket item there is. I mean, you think about it right now, like, so you buy about five or 10 whiteboards, or vermilion boards, or whatever you're gonna do. The big thing is, it's not like what you're buying right now, it's what are we gonna buy by '28? Okay? And the same thing with the vehicles and the buses. Now we see the buses on this horizon. And the truth of it is, everybody's promising to help us with money, but nobody showed up with the money yet. But they have showed up the requirement to buy the product. And so, all I'm saying is, if, if you, if you build these reserves now, over, let's say, the next year or so, you know what I mean? In the next two, two years maybe? Then with particularly capital reserves that take pressure off your budget, you've got a better chance of surviving it, and, and you have then more time to make adjustments. The dilemma is, is that too soon old, too late smart, uh, my father used to say. The key thing is, is that you, you can see the train coming, you, you don't decide to get off the tracks at the last minute. I don't know if the train's gonna stop or not. Seriously, I really don't know. The truth of it is, I wanna be ready.
So as a follow-up then, you say that, you know, big-ticket items, you keep mentioning buses. Buses aren't something that, if I understand it correctly, are not part of our annual budget.
Yes, they are.
We do bond resolutions.
The bond is part of your budget. The bond is part of your budget.
When we bond, cuz it's a separate resolution when we do it.
Yeah.
That bond then gets added to that annual budget for as long as that bond is.
That is correct.
Minus the state aid. Right, plus interest, but minus the state.
Well, see, the, the idea of the minus the state aid is kind of a fallacy in a sense. It sounds like that, everybody likes to think that. It's kinda like, we're gonna use the state aid to buy more buses. The money comes in and goes right into the general fund. For all you know, the money that you use for, you, you thought were buying buses is actually helping you with the pre-K program. Because the pre-K program doesn't have enough money in it to pay for itself. So it's, the money gets commingled. It's nice to think that way, but the truth of it is, every year, what'll happen is, whether the district is reorganized, we change things around, we move transportation systems, or we do whatever we do in the system, the thing is, is to have a strategic plan ahead of time, so that we can make the modifications, knowing that they're coming. Right? That's what I'm worried about is, most districts sit there, and they try and pass an annual budget. I'm saying to you, go ahead, pass your annual budget. But please be aware that things can go awry with your annual budget. And the, the time you'll figure it out, if I don't tell you these types of things, is when it happens, and it's too late to fix it, that's my worry. Does that make sense to you? Yeah. It's kinda like, I can see that roof leaking at the house right now, but I'm sure we can take care of it. Well, Rick, you better start putting some money aside for that baby, cuz those roofs are expensive. Okay, got it. So that's what I'm thinking about. Because what happens is, I can't take this big hit in my budget for a roof all of a sudden. So to me, it's plan ahead, forewarned is forearmed. That's all I'm saying to you. And there's another thing that happens. Let me explain this to you. Here's your tax gap. What I did, I dug up one of your tax gaps. This is actually one of your real tax gaps. And this is the one for the 1920 school year, see it? And what it does is, here's your tax levy for the year, and here's your cap reserve amount, which you didn't have any in there. Here's your growth factor, which is the growth of your community, right? The, your tax-based growth, which you have practically zero zip zilch, okay? All right? And so, then what happens is, here's the pilot. See the pilot in there, 20 million? And if you'll notice, the pilot is then added to this computation. It's added because you collected it, like, in lieu of taxes, payment in lieu of taxes. You didn't collect it in taxes, you collected it in pilot. So what happens here is, you add together, so technically, that's your, more of your, shall we say, property revenue. Then what happens here actually then, is we've got a, a subtotal, and then we've got, here's the adjusted levy. Then what we do is, we multiply it times the CPI that comes from, uh, Department of Labor, 2% in this case. And you'll see it went up here, so now we've got 2% of that. Then it says here, projected pilots, and it's a minus. See how the pilot's now a minus in this part of the formula? And that's because you're not gonna collect it in taxes, you're gonna collect it as a pilot. So you take it out, all right? Bingo. And then you come down, and you could increase taxes at .7% or $684,000. Everybody with me? Okay? Okay, now here's what I did. I took, I dropped the pilot by 15 million dollars, and look at your tax rate now. Look at the bottom. You don't wanna find out then it didn't work. Now, I picked 15 million, why? Yeah, 15 million. If you want 10, you wanna make it 7 and 1/2 million, be half that, it'd only be 25%. It is a big deal. So I think part of my job is just to say, look, you guys should be so proud of yourselves, being so healthy now, but I see potential problems. I call them threats on the horizon. And all we gotta do is try to address them as best we can. Because the system is so important to these parents and kids, that we've gotta keep it going. You try to make improvements all over the place, you continuously try and do it. Why have it upset because, I, I don't wanna be back here five years and say, hold on, hold on, your five years, something could come out. Well, it didn't drop 20 million, Rick, it only dropped 10. Oh, okay. You, you know what I mean? Okay.[1614.05] So you can see, this is the dilemma. So what I'm, what I'm thinking is, what could go wrong? That's supposed to be my job, too, is not just tell you everything's going great, which it is. What could go wrong? So then I looked at your tax structure. This is from the Office of Real Property Tax Services, from the Controller's office, and here's the tax structure. Which one of these lines is you? Which one of these bars is you? This is all about Saguaro County. Anybody? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9?
Number 3.
You're 3. All right? So technically speaking, it's not like your taxes are higher compared to everybody else. And by the way, that line is the state average, and you're at it. So then I said, well, what happens if you had $150,000 full value house? How much would your tax bill be? And that's the red line, next. So it'd be $2,627.13, based on last year's. And so, what would happen here is, is that what we've got here is, is that you're Rick, you have the state average for that, too. So it's not like the case of people saying, we're, we're getting killed over here in taxes. That is not the case. I mean, everybody believes they paid too much in taxes. I've never met anybody, right now, in my whole life, that says, please, tax me more. Okay? Just doesn't happen. But we don't have a case here, really. Everybody can complain about it, it's like the weather, you know what I mean? Everybody complains about it, but nobody does anything about it. So the whole thing here is, they complain all they want, there's no data here that says you're overtaxing people. All right? So what I did is, I just took all three scenarios and put them together here. So scenario 1, the zeros, and you can see it go underwater. Here, I did 2% after this year, and you've got a couple bucks left and 4 million in cash. And then here, you got the 2020, but we needed two 21 percenters. Now, obviously, if the pilot changes by only 5 million instead of 20 million, or it changes by 15 instead of 20, these numbers will be different. But none of them will be good. Compared to where you are now. That's the point. All right? So, my general comment is, you are in fine condition right now. Kudos to the, the, the school district. However, district will begin to experience significant fiscal stress in 25, 26, if the district's major pilot agreement is not sustained, and capital needs of the district are not considered. And what I mean by capital needs, is all those things I talked about with capital reserves. Equipment, capital construction, buses, vehicles, right? Classroom furniture, technology, all that stuff. There are ways the district could operate with less impact on the annual general fund budget. There is limited evidence of long-range financial analysis planning. Now, it's nobody's fault, it's just nobody's probably thought about, like, we're doing fine just now, so what's the problem? And I'm saying, there is no problem now. I'm thinking, future, if we end up having problems with revenue. So I think we could do something with those technology vehicles, bus purchases, and things like this. Especially because of that pilot. There are no long-term threats to the district's financial stability, particularly in revenues. There are long-term, excuse me. If the pilot goes, there's severe damage. And if the pilot even goes a little bit, it won't be comfortable. Okay? If district loses pilots, there will be severe consequences, and the tax cap calculation as well. Because it's a subtraction. Here's how this works. When building aid goes down, okay? Tax cap goes up. When pilots go down, the tax cap goes up. It's the reverse with building aid. But when pilots go down, the tax cap jumps up, all things being equal. Because it's such a huge target. I think there's going to be a steep fiscal cliff starting in 24, 25. They're giving away money like it's Christmas. And right now, the state's being bolstered by, I don't know, it's like billions and billions of dollars of federal funds. The new federal grants, they're going to be helping you off for the next couple of years. I think Nancy has made secure that, I think that's going to help you with some fund balance issues. I think it's going to be a big plus. Nancy's done an excellent job. But, the money's up. September 30th, 2024. What's so important about that date? Well, you have a school district here, it's 23, 24. September of '24. That's in the '24, '25 school year. So you got like a couple of months of it, what are you going to do with a couple of months of it? So the point is, is you'll have a cliff in '24, '25, '26, '27, with regard to the, in other words, the ability to generate super fund balance, all right? The state foundation aid will increase over 10%. Basically, it's going to go up 26%. Now, why'd they say 10%? Because there's a new regulation that the school district has to publish what it's going to use all its money for, if it gets over 10% increase in foundation. But then, you will become safe harmless in two years. Definition of safe harmless is, the foundation aid formula exists now, as crappy as it is, as exists now, says you're not entitled to any more money than what you're getting now. But I put in my estimates, a 3% increase, a million dollars a year. Which should have made things look rosier. Okay? Let's see. Tax cap limitations will occur as the district's debt service decreases as well. So that's going to have an impact in your tax. Four, there are long-term threats to the district's financial stability, particularly fund balances. District history of significant fund balances is on the decline. You still get good fund balances, but they're not as robust as, like, last year was over 6 million. Year before, a couple of years before that, was 4.5, 5 million. Now, we're talking about 2, 3. So it, it is moving. The loss of fund balance deprives you of the opportunity to build reserves, because what happens is, if the pilots go, you'll need all the money you have to operate the district. Period. Okay? Expense, inflation, fuel. Now, I know, we had mentioned here earlier, something about maybe, you know, getting some type of, like, another EPC or something, for fuel efficiency and things like this, will save money. But remember how these are actually calculated? I have nothing against EPCs, per se, I think they're really a good idea, and they do save money. But in most cases, the money's absorbed by the district for other purpose. What I mean by that is, so, they go around and they change all the light bulbs, let's make it up. So they say, well, look, you could save a million dollars in maintenance costs. Well, I don't know, we just bought all the damn light bulbs, we didn't save anything there, yet. But the thing is, we're not going to unemployed a whole bunch of maintenance people, because we don't change light bulbs. Because they have more than enough to do anyway. SED lets them calculate it that way, but it doesn't really ever happen. Second, do you save money in utility costs? Absolutely. That 10-watt bulb will save you money over the 50-watt bulb that you got, or something. Okay, fine. But the thing is, they calculate it on ever-increasing cost of energy. If that makes any sense to you. So you do save money, but it's not like at the end of the project, the district's going to be walking around with $4 million, doesn't know what to do with. It's going to be a little bit each year. Now, the escalation of labor costs and things like this, I think are going to be problematic. We're starting to have a lot of problems with bus drivers, like I said, and all this kind of stuff. Salaries, minimum wages, everything else. Potential escalations in pension costs, and I don't mean the rate of pension, I mean the cost, because it's attributable to the contracts. All right? Escalation of capital construction costs. Oh, we're seeing, we're doing, I've been doing an 80-million-dollar project, and I guess, I got projects coming from 4 million to 80 million dollars now. Some are coming in fine, and some are coming in, I have a $4-million project, came in a million dollars overbid. If everybody... When everybody does everything at the same time, it becomes a problem. All right? Cost of escalation of students with special needs. This is becoming, we took like a cursory look at this, Nancy and I, and we can see it as becoming a bigger part of your budget over time. We didn't want to do a big statistical analysis of it, because you could just see it. It is, but you're not alone, it's happening everywhere. The cost of students with special needs is escalating, but these are our most needy kids. If there was a purpose to be here, it would be that. Okay. Escalation of transportation. I already went through the whole bus thing, probably ad nauseam for you, but you get the drift. Next is proper analysis and planning greater efficiencies and economy of scale. I think if we really planned out what we want to do over the next six or seven years, with all those things I talked about with capital expenses, we would do better. Especially in capital projects. I work with a lot of school districts. I don't do the plan, they do it with their architect. But they actually have a master plan for the school district, and I think you're working on something like that. And you're on, you're on the verge of doing it. But it's not just like, who goes where and all that stuff. But it's also, how much is it going to cost to get this all fixed and running the way we want it? So they have like a master plan for like, capital projects every couple of years, for the next, say, 5, 10 years. Okay? And to me, I think, if we could get away from borrowing to buy things, would be fine, with me, if I had my drift. If it's possible. If it's possible. Okay? If possible. Greater analysis approach to minimize expenses, like, for instance, district expenses, significant loss, pre-save, we could maybe ramp into. What I'm thinking of is, what we could do is, if we could buy this out of a reserve, instead of having to hit the budget during a certain year, it would make it easier to live without the certain revenue. I call it ramping in. Okay? So we can actually move around, depending upon how much you lose. And then, of course, capital construction, this is really important, in terms of, you've got to take a look at your debt service. You are a city school district, so you have a debt limit. And there's other factors that you have to take into consideration. So those are, those are factors I would take a look at. I would reexamine the current budget for sustainability and other issues. In other words, we still have, right? We still have May and June to go, and a lot happens in May and June in a school district. So to me, we'll keep an eye on those expenses. Keep in mind, we're trying to budget things and extrapolate and come up with scenarios into the future. The first couple of years, not so difficult. After a while, it starts to get more difficult. Because you really don't know where exactly the future's going. So we're trying to do our best. I think if you do cost reductions anywhere, please try and keep them away from the kids as much as possible. It's that type of thing. You know, in the old days, it used to be, if Rick worked for you, and he was a teacher or something, or whatever I did, Castonian cleaner, whatever I did, it used to be, when Rick left, retired, got hit by a fast-moving bus or something, one of those new electric buses. Whatever happened to Rick? It used to be, who are we going to get to replace Rick? I think the new question is, do we need to replace Rick? And sometimes you don't need to replace Rick, but you need someone else, instead of a Rick, to do something else that's more needed. So looking at reallocation as well. But sometimes you do have to replace these people. And keep in mind, attrition and breakage looks very simple, but it's not as simple as it looks. Depends upon, you've got to count their insurances and social security, there's a whole bunch of stuff that comes. And then, of course, if you're doing any buyouts or something like that, there's a cost of that, and fears with breakage. And then, of course, like I said, the severe loss, 20% of capital revenues, and we've got to have a long-range fiscal plan, because the state is going to have a problem. Also, look at your reserves and your fund balances, monitor the ERS reserve and so on. And I, I've got to hear, build and use capital reserves for building integrity and eliminate tax-impacted construction. Many times, we're not, I'm not your financial advisor, so I don't know what your financial advisor does. But we have a lot of our districts call me up and say something like this. Okay, Rick, we've got a scope that's $20 million we want to accomplish. Can you take a look at it and tell me what part of it's going to be aidable? That's number one. And number two is, is that, what's the best way we can do this? And when should we do it, so that there's minimal or no tax impact? And usually, it's when there's a drop-off in debt. Does that make sense? But the other big way is the use of the reserve. So let me just make it up. $20-million capital project, $5-million worth of reserves. Okay? You borrow 15, you get 8 on 20 million plus interest. So to the point it was made earlier, kind of like, like using the transaid to help us buy a bus, you could use the capital aid to replenish the capital reserve. So, so to me, I put down the buses, and I put down a number of these things. And the federal grants are going to be problematic that you're using now. I'm not talking about Title I, Title II, Title IV, and all that, Title VII, those little grants. I'm talking about those big-ticket items that you're using right now. They're going away in about a year and a half. Gone. All right? So they're helping you a lot. And I think foundation aid, 26% until you get to safe harmless, none, I don't know what's happening. I put a million dollars in a year, thinking positively, I hope it works out. And then monitor the tax cap. Remember that, if the pilot does diminish even a little bit, it will have an impact on that cap. All right? Because, you know why it does that? You know why it generates, why it makes the cap go up? Because the only way you can actually go get the money the pilot would have paid you, is to get it out of the tax base the pilot now resides in. I actually, about four years ago, I had to go to a district where they increased their levy by 4%. And I had to explain at a public meeting, everybody's taxes were going to go down. All right? It worked, too. But the key thing is, is remember, you've got appropriate fund balance that bounces around a little bit, it's going to look good for the next couple of years. But if that pilot shape you're in, it's just part of my job, is also to bring up the boogeyman and all the things that can go wrong. Because we don't want anything going wrong. Any questions, comments? Anyone care for a mint, or Dan and Jeff are going to go back in Florida? All right, thank you. Have a great evening, you guys, thank you. No, not this.
Mr. Tim, that's a side.
Forgot my hat, so I can't even pass the hat.
So I do, I do have one last question. So, what I'm hearing is, we need to do more by way of saving. But we also need to probably keep certain expenditures down. You said, go through and look and see where you can nip and tuck. Right? That kind of evaluation. So, I'm trying to think about, you know, if, let's just pick a number. You know, if the budget goes up 3% every year, if that has enough of a savings, that is X. If we took a budget and increased it 4% every year, that would increase that unappropriated fund balance at the end of the year that we could stock away in reserves. But at the same time, because every budget is like a percent increase of a previous one, now we're growing the overall budget faster.
Well, yeah, but you've got to understand that everything, not everything, but almost, your major cost items in your budget are compounding in the exact same way. So if you need 10 social studies teacher to teach teachers at different grade levels to teach X amount of kids, in five years from now, you still have X amount of kids, you'll still need those teachers. And those teachers will be making exponentially, or should we say geometrically, more of a progression of salary. So therefore, if they were getting a 3% or 3.5% or 4% raise, it'd be 4, on top of 4, on top of 4, on top of 4. So those things there, so when I say you can pinch your way through, you can count all the pencils you want. But the key thing, if you're, if you have not reached your full capacity for what you want in an educational mission yet, you'll probably be spending more before you're saving more. And the reason, the way you'll save is maybe through breakage, if you can, through attrition or the energy savings that we talked about, things like that. But right now, I see you faced with more escalations that really are probably either beyond your control, like the buses, for instance, as an example, or that you need to make sure you have a robust educational program, which is your actual mission. If you go to your website and you read your mission statement, you don't understand why you're spending money. So the key thing is, you've got to keep that going. So what a lot of districts make the mistake of doing is, they say, well, we've got to start saving money. And what they actually do is, they save a lot of money. And the educational program is bankrupt. They've got a crap system, terrible school system. And everybody knows it, except them. But they save everybody a lot of money. Then also, when they figure out they want to fix it, then it costs a lot of money. And it really doesn't cost a lot of money, it's just the money they already gave back. But now, trying to get it back from the voters is like pulling teeth. Because nobody can figure out why, how you could do this for so long, and it didn't bother you, but now it does bother you. So now, it looks like you don't know what you're doing for sure. So if anybody had any doubt before, they're convinced at that point.
So it seems to me, then, what you're saying is really where the main crux of all this lies, is making sure that if there's breakage, we take advantage of that. If, if Rick retires, and we don't need Rick again, then we find somebody else, or we absorb that money through the breakage.
That is correct. But the first thing you do is, do we need Rick again?
Right.
Then the second thing is, if we don't need Rick, do we need something else that Rick isn't doing, that we should have had, could have had, would have had, or would like to have, instead? And if we still don't need anything, then we build that reserve for that capital project to replace the roof that's going to have an escalating cost over the next 10 years.
So then, would you think it's fair to say that if you're considering adding new positions, that you should be looking at breakages or other things that compensate, as opposed to just flat-out adding them?
Well, depends. Here's what I would look at. First of all, I'd really like to see how we're going to nail down this bus situation. Now, right now, obviously, you've got a budget in play. So to me, when you're building your budget next year, that might be a factor, in a way. But we probably should know more about the bus situation, that's number one. But number two, should have a better idea of your capital project needs, number two, right? You should have a better idea of this long-range plan that I'm asking you to do with regard to technology, furniture, equipment, and vehicles, and all this stuff. You have a better idea there. And in that case, you might still want to consider stockpiling your money, because you still won't maybe have a perfect answer on this pilot. So what you could, we could probably run the numbers over again, and just drop the pilot 2 million, or 10 million, or whatever it is, we could see the impact. But I've got to tell you, if any of it goes, there's a problem. Unless you start saving now, is what I'm trying to say. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Yes.
Well, or I would say, also to reconsider the way we do things. So to go back to the buses, for example. I don't know what our guidelines are for which students we provide busing for, but I know my nieces and friends who live in other districts, it's like 1.5 miles. So the kids are walking, and I think we bus way under that.
Well, here's the thing you've got to keep in mind there. That's probably a good point. But to take, take things away is very difficult. Because everybody shows up, when you're trying to take something away. I guess the thing is, what people don't understand is, being a board member is really a tough job. You know, you're not only volunteers, but it's a tough job. The responsibility is actually enormous. You can, you will not believe how many people will hate you after you take away that half a mile bus ride. I mean, I hate to say this, but this morning, I was heading to another district, and it took me forever to get out of my own development. Okay? Following, all I could do is, I was like, having a rough time in the car, because I had not planned it properly to get in front of that bus. All right? But I watched us pick up like 80 million kids, it seemed to me. I don't know, I thought, I could have swore I grew three years older, just sitting there. Because, but what happens is, if they were to go to that development, which, by the way, the school is at the end of the corner. Okay? They would take that away? Placards, picking it around, we'd be, we'd go crazy. People seem to understand where the money comes from for all this, it comes from them, really. All right? And basically, in your case, a lot of it's coming from something called the pilot.
Is it mandatory to grant all students an electricity?
No. You know, I always tell the story about when I was a kid, and they tried to educate me, which was a real tough task. I worked, I lived around the corner from an elementary school, I'd walk to school. They'd send me home, they'd send me home for like a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. they'd send me home, they'd send me home for like a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, but I didn't have to walk through a drug dealer, or a pedophile, or anything else. I mean, you know, it was just kind of normal in the old days, but these days, and I didn't have to do a country road either. Seriously, you know what I mean? So the truth of it is, it's a different world. And what happens is, I, I'll make you a bet, if you were to do like a focus group with parents, I'll make you a bet, considering I've been a super, I've had every job, it's like I can't keep a job in a school district, I had every job. So what happens is, you will find out from parents is, they actually expect the bus ride in story. It's right, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
No.
No, but you see what I'm saying? I don't know why you're bringing that up. He gets the bus ride down there on the other end of the block, how come I don't get it? I got in so much trouble as a school superintendent, I didn't even know it, I walked into a board meeting, I had like 50 people there screaming at me, I didn't know what happened, they're starting to tell me that their bus route had changed. So we adjourned the board meeting, I called my transportation supervisor, this is by the first week, first day of school. I said, John, what, what happened? Well, I just moved, moved, you know how we did like every other house, yeah, well, I just moved them down one house and give somebody, the 50 people were there, how come it's not stopping at my house anymore? I mean, it could hardly hold a board meeting. People are fickle, but you know, they feel that they're paying for this, they should get this, they got it before, they should get it, what's the problem? So I think part of the board's job too is to educate people about how things work. I can't tell you how many people think that the 2% tax cap is actually 2%. Well, everybody thinks it's 2%. It's our job, really, to tell them it's not.
I just have one quick question as well, I just, the one thing I can't get, seem to get past, is that it does feel like, even if you save, the amount of money we're looking at, it feels like you could save and save, but you're only going to buy yourself a year, really.
Well, I use, that's why I use the 20 million, we don't really know when it's going to drop. So this is like worst-case scenario.
Yeah, I get that.
Like I said the time over here, I said, if it drops five, we could run a scenario of five, if it drops two, we could do a scenario of two. But the thing is, is that if it drops, you've got a problem no matter what, it's the magnitude we're worried about. So until we can get more information, I got to deliver a report tonight, until we know more information, I don't know them. So I'm giving you the worst-case scenario.
The worst-case scenario does feel like we couldn't save enough.
I would, I would say.
I'm just going to say that.
I hate to say this, but I'd say that's pretty accurate.
I mean, we've already been through the, the 2 million, the 3 million on a decreasing pilot, we've already been through that, and that was painful, incredibly painful, where we did take away sports, and we did take away things that.
Exactly, that's what I'm telling you.
Made us hated members of the community, so we've already been through that, and it's terrible. Had we saved for that, that would have, I can see where that's beneficial. It's the, it's the landslide that I don't think we can save enough for.
The only reason I put the landslide is because the thing is, is somebody could say, I put 2 million, well, we just, that's athletic. But see, that's not what we're after for an answer. We really don't know the magnitude, 2 would do. I, I always think of the worst, it's kind of like when you go to the car dealer and you say, something's making a noise in there, and you're sitting there waiting for the guy to come out, you're thinking, this is going to be a $2,000 bill, and you think, huh, I'm going to pay for this, and he comes out and says, sometimes, it's a $2,000 bill, sometimes it's, oh, it's just a piece of chalk stuck in a tire, no charge, or you know, $69 an hour, because I looked at it, whatever it is. So to me, it's the lesson that's important. Does that make sense?
It does, especially being an educational institution. So I also just really want to thank you for combining the quality of education with the finances and not just making it a financial thing.
Well, we're all worried about the money, we can't forget our purpose.
It's true, and I also think that when you look at that chart of our, you know, we might be asking our taxpayers to only pay the state average, but paying taxes is an emotional event, and so if we don't think we're getting the product back, it doesn't matter how much we're paying, we're going to be upset about how much it is. So the, the product is really important.
Well, I know you're superintendent for a number of years, and I got to believe that he will be trying to improve student performance ad nauseam. Believe me.
I agree with you.
It's an important thing to do, and that's, that's why we're here. It's really the product, but the key thing is, you know what the engine, you know, the fuel to that engine is money. That's the problem. So I'm just trying to say, you know, as a lesson, you can see where we are. So thank you.
We really appreciate it. Thank you so much for such a comprehensive job, and, oh.
And I'm sorry, I just have one more question. I know before, in my training, we talked about, you don't want to borrow from your reserves to keep your levy at zero, right? Because it's going to compound over time.
Right.
And we're in a situation that is rare right now, because we have such an influx of, right? Would you beho, would it behoove us to make a nominal increase in that?
No, not necessarily this year. For instance, well, I think the thing is the DICE cap this year, and I think what needs to be done is more study, to be honest with you, and fair. Because what happens is, I don't know where these buses are really going, this could be a cha-ching thing, you know, big dollar amount, but you've got a lot, you've got a big fleet. It's not like you have 10 buses, right? So the key thing is, is, and then you've got a number of buildings, so there's a capital expense. And then technology in a district the size is a big expense as well. But the other big expenses, I think, I wish I could almost pull up that spreadsheet, boom, 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 add up, all those salary lines, and then add up the entire benefit line, and you will see that 70% of your budget is people, is people working with people. It's the same thing, in, in any educational area usually, it's people working with people generally. So the key thing is, is what you don't want to do is damage the mission. But the key thing is, is what can go wrong so that we can protect ourselves to the best of our ability based on what we know? So I've given you kind of a, three different scenarios with that pilot going away, showing, obviously, it's going to be a disaster if it totally goes away. So this kind of should be giving you incentive, talking to your attorney, saying, look, we've got to come up with a bunch of change, but if you can't come up with the same amount, you're going to have problems. Couple million is not going to go well, and you've seen it before, and it just is devastating to a school system, and it's devastating to children. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
We appreciate your time. How about we, if everyone would like, a five-minute break and come back?
Okay, board, so we're ready for our second part of our, our presentation tonight, and to assist us, we have Mr. Chris Andrews, who is Senior Consultant for the Transportation Advisory Services, and you have a copy of his report in front of you this evening, and so we're going to turn this part of our meeting now over to Chris, Mr. Andrews.
Okay, thank you. I, one of our earliest studies, we started this business back in 87, early 90s, one of our clients was Rick. He was a superintendent at Risk and He Falls, he hasn't changed much since then. You always learn something when you talk to him. Before I start, just to answer a question I heard you ask about, do we have to transport? Cities don't have to transport students, other than special ed, so it's something you're doing, that would be something, you'd be hard-pressed to get rid of it now. I did do some work, Springfield, Massachusetts is another city school, not in New York, but to minimize their transportation expenses, they hired a bunch of crossing guards, like over 100, and just put them all throughout, the city's a bigger city, but all throughout the district, so they could widen that region where they didn't have to transport, and they found it a lot easier to hire crossing guards than school bus drivers.
Is their weather similar to ours, do you know?
Yes, yeah, it is. And I'm not saying it was easy, but that was a novel approach, I thought, driving up to the school, you saw crossing guards everywhere, because they just wanted the kids to get to school safely, but they could walk them further, so. On the, on the opposite end, this was the terrible driver shortage last year, another school district asked us to survey schools about what was going on, and when I talked to Chicago, they were 200 drivers short two weeks before school started. And I said, what do you do in this case? He said, we're making the kids walk six miles to school. So, and if you've been to Chicago, that wouldn't be a pleasant trek, so I don't know how it worked out, but it's, people had to do some extreme things to survive the start of school last year, and you went through your own thing, so. I'll, I'll start with saying I appreciate everybody's help here in putting the data together, it was right during COVID. I think one day you were dispatching buses, Nancy, when I was trying to get information, and, you know, it's just, it was a different kind of atmosphere, but I appreciate everybody doing the work. As I said, we've been doing this quite a while, I've, TAS has done over 500 of these, I've been, I think, 200 in some of them, probably 100 in some board meetings, this was the most educational board meeting I've been to, I think. Learning, learning what can go wrong, it was scary. What, what I'm going to do is, the executive summary that was in your report, I'll use that as the guide here to go through, and I'll just discuss each of the recommendations briefly, and then at the end, if you want to have any questions or anything, be glad to go into it, so. We started by saying annually review the TRA lines. What, what happens there when, when districts try to help each other, or help BOSEs, or share, sometimes they'll share buses, they'll share runs, they'll pick up students for other districts, whatever it might be. The state looks at, did that generate revenue, and then they do a formula against their aid, and sometimes it's a negative. We've talked to the state for years about aid being a negative when it comes to sharing among districts. The one I pointed out in there previous to COVID, it was a break even, which is what you hope when you, when you help another district, or you help BOSEs. I think because of COVID, there was an anomaly where their formula turned out to cost you money for, for doing some sharing, so. The advice here is just pay attention to that, because they play their games with the aid, and you don't want to get burned on it. It's not unusual, this is probably the fourth time I've seen it this, this school year where the aid was a negative aid impact of sharing, but I think it was because of COVID, the mile, it's a mile is driven aid factor that they use, and a lot of schools' miles went down even though the sharing didn't, so, that's what caused that. Maintain your present spare ratio, you're, you're within the 10 to 20% we like to see on spares. The reason you have those isn't just for sports, but also for specialized vehicles. Rick mentioned getting special needs kids into a district, if you don't have a, a backup wheelchair bus, for example, and somebody moves in the district, you're stuck leasing one or trying to contract it out or something, so it's good to have the, the spares for those as well. And also maintenance, that's the main reason for the spares, is when buses are down, or the state's coming in, going to pull a bunch off the route, so, so you're good there. Trade in some 2017 buses, I know you've got your, your cycle planned, what you don't want to have happen is what happened that year, where you had to buy 16 buses all at once. So by spacing out some of those, that year model, when you trade in, you minimize that from happening again. This whole thing, I'll stop here for a minute on the, on the electric thing. It's, it's interesting that the state has taken that position, I doubt they'll be able to fund it, it's a personal thing. I've, I've talked to state aid, within a few months ago, I called and said, what exactly will you aid if I, I've got a school wants to buy a $310,000 school bus, they're at 90% transportation, will they get that money for that bus? He said, yep, we'll aid it, and there's no cap or anything. Says, not right now, we got the money, so. So it depends on where they're at, income-wise, okay, with tax-wise. I asked about infrastructure, and he said, well, it depends on building aid, but we don't know how it's going to fly yet, so they don't know, and that can be expensive. I'm all for school buses being electrified, because it's a perfect vehicle, it goes out, runs 10 or 15 miles, comes in, drops the kids off, does it again, maybe goes 20 miles for the second run, and that's it, comes in and charges for four hours, and in the afternoon repeats itself. It's a perfect electric vehicle, use of electric vehicle. But the cost of getting there, and the fact that, I just read a report recently, the grid right now can support about 20% of what the demand is going to be for electric vehicles. So we're going to get it all set up and plug it in, that's not going to happen, so. It's got to change, and I don't think, I don't think it can happen quick enough to meet the state guidelines, but I certainly hope so, but it's, the grid has to be improved drastically for that to happen, so. I'm, I'm not recommending jumping into it yet. What I told the last two schools that went, I said, go buy an F-150, they're about $35,000 for the electric lightning, it's called, of course, they're on back order way up. I think they're, last I read, they were over a million in back order or something, because it's such a popular vehicle, it's such a good price. They, they matched the gasoline price when they came out with the electric F-150. So if you want to dip your feet into it and see how it works, and what the maintenance is like, and how reliable it is, it's a good way to do it. Of course, then you read on, on the news, don't park your electric vehicle in your car, because it might burst into flames at night, so. It's, they didn't say it about F-150, by the way, but that was, I saw that in the news recently. So it's a.
So if you're not recommending that, people do it now, do you have an idea when we should be starting to think about looking at it? Is it 2, 3, 7, whatever that number is?
Well, the, the state is, is mandating you to start thinking about it, so that, I guess that's what you're going to have to run with at the moment. It gets better every year, the quality gets better, the prices drop, the NACERTA-type aid, that's going to go away, but they're going to aid, if they're aiding you 90% anyway, that, that's not such a, a big issue, other than the fact that you have to front those costs.
Sure.
But I, I think what they'll do is push it off, though, just because they can't meet that.
I guess maybe a way to rephrase my question, again, I may not have the exact answer, but for a fleet our size, when should we reasonably start buying them to be able to turn them all over in time to meet the mandate?
Two years ago.
Well, that's part of the reason I ask.
Yeah, if, if they're going to stick with that mandate, you've got to, I would, I would start, if, if it feels like it's going to take place, I would start in your next cycle, see if you can get a couple. It's probably too late funding-wise for this coming cycle, or, you know, your, but the next one, start looking at it, you know? Yeah? Yeah?
Thank you.
Okay. Train a staff member to review bus videos, right now, the supervisor does that, it's a time-consuming job, especially he and the rest of the staff in there are working 10, 12-hour days anyway, to sit there and look at bus videos. I think you'd be better off training somebody else, maybe that's part-time, and would like a little more, a few more hours or something, get them, you know, certified and confidential and all that, but don't, don't have that guy or gal doing it. Install security cameras, that, that's mainly for a vandalism thing, you've just got the one inside the building when you walk in at the bus garage, that's the only security camera on the premises. I'd get it over the fueling area and the garage doors, so people aren't getting in there, because what, what happens when things go awry is, they, they tend to just break buses, or take batteries, or, or whatever the case may be, and cut the fuel lines, things like that, it's, you don't want it to happen, but I've seen it, so I'd get a few cameras out there. Labor issues, utilize the ABCs of driver recruitment, you haven't seen the appendix yet, so you haven't seen it, I sent it to the school when we were doing the study, it's just a collection of the 26 best things we've seen in schools around the country that have worked to help schools recruit and retain drivers. Some of them are easy. Some of them are easy, like making sure they have the right uniforms, and things like that. Some of them are surprise, like give them a sign-on bonus, like you would an athlete, okay, to encourage them to come. Along with that, there's another one, to temporarily offer a training rate. Right now, it takes, can take eight to twelve weeks to get a new driver into where they're actually driving. Most of the people you get can't wait eight to twelve weeks, so offer some kind of incentive to stick it out. Utilize a monthly operations report, we talk about that, and a maintenance report. Basically, it's a one-page, or maybe a two-page tops document from transportation, showing you what's happening that month in transportation. You don't have to make it a big thing, I'll be sending it over in a Word document, you can personalize it, if there's something that interests you folks, you can say, hey, we want to know, you know, how many breakdowns we had, or how many new drivers did we hire, or where, something they can do real quick, but it just gives you, I call it an ad a glance, just so you know what's going on. Encourage ASE school bus mechanic certification. That's the same thing you see when you take your car to the Chevy deal, you see, we have ASE-certified mechanics. About ten, twelve years ago, ASE came out with a school bus certification program. We don't see it often in schools, I think it should be, you ought to have at least somebody in the district that's ASE-certified. The best reason to do it isn't that it means they know more, it means that you have the confidence. I saw a school where the bus got in an accident, somebody sued, saying the buses weren't well-maintained, and the ASE-certified school bus mechanic said, I know exactly what I'm doing, I'm certified in what I'm doing, and that quelled the case, so. That was worth it right there. I mean, it costs thirty-six dollars to take a test, to show that they know what they're doing, so it's, and it's got, I think it's eleven components of maintaining a bus, so it's worth the investment on the part of the district. Your head mechanic is ASE-certified, but not as a bus mechanic. He came out of a field where he was ASE-certified, and he kept those up, and he's not opposed to doing, he says it just never came up. Seek out additional driving training programs, there's a lot of good ones out there. What happens is, the state does a good job of mandating your driver training every year, they have to go through so many hours of it. But it gets boring when you say the same thing over and over again, so there's a lot of different ways to get programs in there. We mentioned one, I think it's called the Peaceful Bus Program, it's a CD, and they simply come in and watch it on the computer for an hour, something that's got, was developed by a transportation director and a school principal here in New York. And it's just how to calm a bus, and how to manage the students better, it's a good visual, a hundred and fifty-nine dollars, I think it is. Continue to move towards a more equitable allocation of benefit costs. In that area, we were talking about, you offer, basically, you offer your drivers full-time benefits for the part-time jobs, and we're saying, as you move forward, especially in light of some of the things you're talking about here, it's something you might want to look at. The best example of that is a driver who works six hours a day gets the same benefits as a teacher who works eight hours a day, is that equitable, when you talk about benefit Consider implementing attendance incentive plan, it's quite common in schools, you don't have it here, but it sounds like a bad idea that you'd have to give them incentive to show up for work, but it does help minimize sick time misuse, because they get a reward for showing up. You don't want a sick driver to show up, but you don't want the program misused either, and it's worked in most schools. Right before, consider use of tablets, there should be another entry, it's in the report, but as I was reviewing this, sitting there today, better communicating your wage and benefit package. You've got a great wage and benefit package. I asked the drivers, when I met with them here, why do they think drivers are going elsewhere? And they said, oh, they get better hourly rate. Well, most schools, and I'll get into this when we talk about routing, most schools that are double-tripped have four-hour guarantees for their drivers, because of the typical route, you go out, pick up the kids, and come in, it's typically not an hour, especially in a city environment. So they make their run, maybe sit and have a cup of coffee, go to the bathroom, whatever, go out and make their next run, and come back in. So it's a two-hour day, in the afternoon, it's a two-hour day. So that's what most double-trip schools do, is we guarantee our drivers four hours. A lot of times, then, that four-hour, five-hour, six-hour, somewhere in there, you have a break for benefits. How many hours do you have to work to get benefits? I imagine what happened here, and I wasn't here, at some point, you said, if we have six-hour minimum workday for benefits, we won't have to pay as many people the benefits, because they don't work six hours. Somewhere in negotiations, I imagine that changed, well, we need three hours in the morning, and three hours the afternoon for our drivers, so they have six-hour minimum, so they get benefits. Nothing wrong with that, I think it's great for, you know, it's a great benefit, and it's certainly a good recruitment tool, because you're offering them more money without raising their wages, and they're eligible for benefits now. It works well, but you don't communicate it well. If you're losing drivers, when I heard you were short drivers, it's, how can that be, given this package? It's not being communicated properly to the recruits that are coming in. If you're a single guy, twenty-eight years old, no kids, you're after the money. But if you're married, in your thirties or forties, and you tell them, hey, you can work four hours a day, get paid for six, if you're, this is in district, the ones who have out of district runs, work more hours. You get family benefits at eighty-five percent, I think it is, contribution. On top of that, if you retire from this district, well, you get that same benefit until you die, or your wife dies. I mean, it's, you have a long-term insurance benefit, am I correct? That's the way I interpret it. That's like a quarter of a million-dollar benefit, right there, if you retire from this district and live long enough. I know, you even pay it, when they get to Medicare, you pay that, eighty-five percent of that contribution, which is very unusual. I think I've seen that twice in thirty years. So, I'm not, you're never going to take it back, I don't think, but communicate it so that you're not losing people. I mean, that's, it's a good job. I've told some friends that live up here, hey, Roswego. Really, that's a, that's a good deal. That's right. In the routing section, and this all comes into play there, too. Record actual ridership post-COVID. Everything we've done this past year has screwed up transportation, so even trying to compare it to other schools, they're all screwed up, though. Once things have calmed down again, make sure you get current numbers before you make any decisions about changing routing. If ridership is found to be less, then modify routes accordingly, and utilize your, OTR is one-touch routing, by the way. It's a feature that your software has, it's underutilized, and probably one of the best packages out there for scenario routing. You can take your routes offline, as long as you've got your seating capacity and your buses, and the kids, number of kids, and the grades they're in, the buildings they're in, as long as that's in the system, which it should be anyway, you can reroute the whole fleet by making a change. You can say, all right, suppose we, I mentioned bell time changes, suppose we change the bell times at the high school, middle school level, what's that going to do to our fleets? You push, they call it one-touch, because it's about three buttons in there, and that software, and it recalculates the whole fleet. Tells you, no, you're going to save so many buses, you're going to add so many buses. It's not perfect, because it's computer and garbage in, garbage out. But most schools don't know how to use it, your folks do. I would say probably ten percent of transportation departments that have it, use it. And they use it regularly, it's a good feature, and it'll help you do some of the things we talked about in here, about your routing. And what I'm referring to is the double-trip versus triple-trip, okay? You are double-tripped now, and it works well, but if you triple-tripped, you could save significant money if you wanted to go that route. It's not easy. Triple-tripping would mean, you've got three bell times in the morning, and three bell times in the afternoon. So I laid out a scenario where your high school, middle school, elementary schools would, most schools would be like seven fifteen, eight fifteen, nine fifteen, something like that. It's not easy politically, I mean, parents hate it, they don't like change, teachers don't like it either, because it changes their day. But you're, because you're in a city, urban environment, you can do it. You can't do it in a rural school, the routes are too long. You don't have that issue here, other than the one, was it Anita, I think, I met up, yeah. So that bus, you might have to add a bus to make this work, that type of thing. But you would, but when you triple-trip, then, you don't need as many buses, you don't need as many drivers. So, in your case, you're ahead of the game. Most schools, when we do this, they can't do it, because their drivers are getting paid for four hours, so if we say triple-trip, they got to bump up every driver that's left by two hours. And those that have the benefits tied differently, they'd have to then make those drivers eligible for health insurance as well. So a lot of schools look at triple-trip and say, we can't afford it. You're already there, there's no going to be any incremental costs to you go into triple-tripping, because you've got that infrastructure set up for benefits and work, the hours. So you could do it. Again, not being easy, I don't know if you will or not, I present it, and also, when you look at the numbers, the state benefits the most when you do it from the savings, because you're at ninety percent aid. So even though we're saving, hey, we can save half a million dollars, state gets most of that, okay? But where it might help you is the driver shortage, you wouldn't need as many drivers. And if you did have to save money, if scenario, I'm not even sure what pilot is, I assume it has something to do with your nuclear plant here, but.
Payment.
Payment, oh, okay. I was sitting back there thinking, what could that stand for? So, if your pilot implodes, and you've all of a sudden got to save a lot of money, or you're planning on, as you're negotiating, and you realize this may happen, we got to save a couple million dollars a year, triple-tripping would go a long way towards helping you get there. So it's kind of a backup plan, if you will, going for it, not something you want to just jump into, but you could do it, you're set up here to do it. And finally, I have to talk about continuing to operate the program in-house, while pursuing partial contracting. Schools that are trying to contract, or are contracting, going to bid, are finding nobody at the table. Contractors can't find drivers either, so we've had bid openings this year where nobody showed up, because they're just in the same boat, and their hands are tied even more, because a lot of schools want to save money, they want the low bid, and if you're the low bidder, you can't find people usually, so. You have, do have a history of some partial contracting for out of district, I believe, so you could do that with, I think you could do that without much union issues, depends on the union, I suppose, but because there's a history of it, you could do some of that. To contract the whole thing, New York has what's called the Taylor Law, and that means you have to negotiate the decision to contract, and the impact of the decision, so, it's can make it interesting. Any questions? Let me wrap up by saying, the program, right now, is working well, it's, I think it's well-managed, that they're responsive. The only complaints I really heard were athletic-wise, and in the COVID situation, athletes' programs got hit the hardest, because education came first, so that wasn't unusual.
Did I miss the use of tablets or substitute drivers?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that came after, after I didn't insert that one, yes. Yeah, for subs, it's really good, because the subs are the ones typically that don't know the routes as well. Right now, you've, I've ridden on buses when the subs are in there, they're relying on kids. Is this where you get offered, you know? So, if you had, if, nothing else, if you had tablets on buses that you use mainly for those, you could put it on there. You could have, you could have the holders on all the buses, but just move the tablets around.
I just had a question regarding the, as of the OTR, we're utilizing, we're not utilizing it?
You are.
We are, effectively?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Again, that's unusual.
Okay.
I sat down, when they came out with it, I went, they're based in Latham, by the airport there in Albany, and I called them and said, I want to see this thing work, and they sat down with a hundred bus operation, and it took us fifteen minutes to reroute every bus in the district. Really, it's a phenomenal, if you're ever bored and want to go over to the transportation, let them know ahead of time, and see how it works, it's really cool.
Another quick question, how many, with the districts you've worked with, how many of them, you know, roughly speaking, have an aid on every single bus? A second person?
Very little, five percent, probably, on every bus, yeah.
And are we required to have the video?
No, no.
But we do, right, on every bus?
Yes, you do.
On every bus, okay.
Yeah, that, that helped a lot of schools that couldn't put aids on every bus, at least you have the cameras, you know?
I have a question about that, too. So, the video, the reviewing, I guess I was not aware that that was happening, what is the video review? Is that just like, take, is it only if there's a problem, or is it just like, they do a sample every day of each of the buses, or?
It's usually when there's a little difficulty that's come up, right? We hear that there's some issue, when there's a bus that we're checking on, because it's had a series of problems.
Okay.
The director, he wanted to go spend a lot of time watching the videos, checking them out.
Yeah, because usually you don't know exactly when it happens, you have to watch that whole video, and if it's near the end, you've had a long, long ride.
I agree. I would like to get someone else to help with that, because that takes a lot of time to comment, but you may not really spend full problems on that one, so we can use a lot of it.
Yeah.
Very important, because that's the way you figure out what's happening, sometimes on the buses.
So, as a follow-up to what Lisa was talking about before, from busing people, you were talking about relatives. I see it says here that all preschool and kindergarten, all are eligible, one through six, if you're more than a half-mile, and then nine through twelve, it's more than a mile. What we didn't talk about before, and what's said here, is that students living less than a mile and a half, that's not aidable?
Right.
So we've got this population of students who, I mean, those are all, they're all of them for kindergarten, pre-K, so if you like, literally, if you live next door.
You could be walking.
You don't have to be a walker, you can be picked up at the bus next door to the school, and go into your pre-K or kindergarten classroom.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and all of that's not aidable at?
That's correct.
A mile and a half, less than a mile and a half, okay, well.
It kind of goes to what your, what your priorities are as a district, and what your, what your district wants, basically, but yeah, I mean, there are some districts who, I was in a district that didn't do that at all. And then I was in one district that, they picked up everybody, they didn't care if you was across the street, from the school, you know, they picked up everybody. And then I was at a district recently, where we had to cut back on some of that, because it was just, it was costing so much, not just in terms of the day-to-day operations, in terms of the persons having to drive the bus, but a lot of time included, and the maintenance for the buses, because it was stopping and going every place in the town that we were in. So, it really depends on what the board would like to see happen, the community would like to want, but yes.
Do we still utilize bus stops?
We do have centralized stops in our district. We do, so people do go to centralized stops, and there are some people who do get picked up, usually the younger ones, at some of their homes as well. So yes, we do have centralized bus stops.
Yeah, the history on transportation aid in New York, is when they closed all the little community and schools, you know, there used to be thousands of schools around the state, when they centralized to what we have now, the state to get it done, said, don't worry, we'll aid all this transportation. And it was always ninety percent, across the board, every school in the state got ninety percent transportation aid. About fifteen years ago, maybe twenty years ago, they changed that and made a wealth-based formula. We had, I remember a school up, Indian River, Indian Lake, New York, anybody ever been up to Indian Lake? We did a study up there, they were ninety percent, and they were looking to what they could do to be efficient, and we told them things, and they said, wow, you know, we're ninety percent. That, next year, it went to six and a half percent. So now, now Indian Lake shares their bus garage, they merged with the town and the village, and they all have one facility, and they share pumps, and, you know, those things had to happen, because the aid just went away. And that happened all over Long Island, I mean, we were busy for years with that.
So, so if I can ask you a follow-up, when this, when Lisa first asked this, Dr. Tim's, oh, you're going to have people with placards showing up, and that, you know, it's a political thing, and sometimes these things happen, if we think they're in the best, you know, best decision for the district. I'd like to know your opinion on this, what we're doing, and what you think is a best practice?
Well, financially, the best practice is to stay within aid guidelines. Practically speaking, you can't, especially if they're so used to what you're giving them now. I think you've just got to take a look, if you want attention to your board meetings, change it, I mean, you're going to be swamped with parents. Is it, are you doing it just because you've always done it? Is there safety concerns in the district about where they walk through? You know, you have to look at all those things. You certainly don't want those pre-K, K kids walking to school very, any further than across the street, and even then, not unless you have a good crossing guard system. So it's a difficult topic, because it affects- So it's, it's a difficult topic because it affects everybody. So it's tough there. The state also, it's, when you talk about the aid you're getting for transportation, they changed things. I mean, until, I think, I think the late 90s, they used to aid health insurance for drivers and families. They changed it overnight and said, we're only aiding the drivers from now on. So all your family benefit packages and all the retirement and health insurance and all that, you don't get any transportation aid for it anymore. But they didn't, there was no warning on that, and that hits schools hard. So you, you gotta be careful what you promise when you, when you're negotiating and changing things because you don't know the future.
I think in our community, there really is, there are safety concerns when you're talking a mile and a half, and especially on those days when we have to close schools sometimes just because we're concerned of those who are walking a half mile, you know, it's just too cold. So I do think there are safety and health concerns.
Aside from the, I mean, the cold, some sidewalks aren't cleared, and these kids are walking in the road.
Yes.
With the vehicles, yeah, it's, it's just a dangerous situation. I believe we have been bringing all of our kindergarten kids in on a bus for over 40 years. I'm, I know you wouldn't know, I know I know because my niece and nephew, it happened with them, and they've been out of school for 40 and 42 years, so.
Yeah, within, within a city-school district, it would take, to change it, would take a city commitment to, like you say, keeping sidewalks plowed, more crossing guards. I mean, some cities have what they call walking school buses, where they have neighborhood crossing guards that pick up kids at their houses, and then they walk to school with them like it's a bus. So they have somebody with them at the front end and the back end when they cross the street and all this stuff. So, you know, it gets quite involved, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so the one thing I'll add to it is, so my friends, I have friends who live in Geneva, so, you know, same climate that we do. I mean, one of the downsides to it is you get a lot more car traffic at the schools because, I mean, sometimes, so, which is, can be a problem and a huge safety concern as well. So, I mean, I was just putting it out there for, like, I was shocked when, I mean, I live like half a block away from Fitchu, so my kids just walked even, well, we actually had to go sign them in at like till first grade, but it was a longer walk, walk to the bus stop than it was to the school. I was like, well, okay, they, they're good, just walking, but I was really surprised that we have such a, you know.
Large group that we can.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the school, what's the elementary school you go out, Ridge? Before you leave town, it's on the left, it's a little hard to get at.
That's Fitchu.
That's Fitchu, yeah. I, I tried to observe the different drop-off and pick-up at different schools. I couldn't even get near it with all the parents. The road must've been closed almost, and it was just.
They're all like that.
And you provide transportation, I mean, yeah.
So I'm wondering, this, something was brought up at a previous meeting about buses that continue on routes with kids that never get picked up. You know, do you have a sense about the prevalence of that, how much that's, you know? I, I didn't tell the transportation department that I'm gonna drive my kid to school every morning, so the bus, this is not me, but, you know, so the bus, the bus shows up every morning, right? I imagine that situation has to occur.
Yep, yep. Routes, the software routes the bu, the kids based on eligibility, okay? So if your son hypothetically is eligible and you never tell him you're not going, they'll, they'll come there and get, they'll expect that child at that stop, or if they come to your house, they'll pull up to your house a certain number of times, and then the driver will come in and say, hey, nobody's at there, there's nobody at that. So they can change it. That's why we say, right now, you are checking actual ridership probably because of COVID, but they're actually taking counts every day and all that. So once, once you know that, the state used to mandate that you had to have a seat for every child that was eligible on the bus. It's no longer the case. No, no. You have to have enough buses to run the program safely, but you don't have to have those. So a lot of, a lot of schools are cutting back on that based on a historical tracking of that route, you know?
So then, as a follow-up to that, do we have a system where a bus driver can say, you know, I haven't picked this kid up in whatever amount of time, one, two, three, four weeks, where a supervisor calls the house and says, do you really need Bobby picked up because they haven't? Do we do that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, yeah, great.
I think for the same reason that we've been discussing with the walking, I think a lot of parents like to reserve that seat for the days when they can't get their own car out of the driveway, or it's, you know, it's really cold and they don't wanna leave the house with the kids, or, or it's a senior, junior driver, and they don't wanna go. So I, I think that happens, too.
Yep, and they don't, and they don't, they don't route the buses at capacity either. No, no school does. They, they shoot for 85% tops, and they also shoot, at the elementary level, it's three to a seat, at the high school, middle school, it's two to a seat. So even though you see a 66-passenger bus on a high school run, you typically won't see more than 44 kids or so. And then if they don't show, they don't show, but.
Thank you so much for all your time and effort and for waiting.
Thanks for paying attention, I thought you'd all be clouded over by something.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Yep.
All right, board, so.
Which way is out, that way?
That way, and the make, make it left, there you go. All right, board, so we've got, you've got the two reports there from those two consultants. Mr. Poe and Deb Eras sent out a memo this week with respect to the things that they are working on, and in their write-up, I think I have that on the table there, they shared where they're at in terms of enrollment history and projections, the educational program study, still working on that, the facilities piece, that, that analysis has nearly been completed, still got a couple of things to work on there, the staffing piece, finances. And then they also shared a comparison chart for other districts, and they tried to break it down, so they didn't put every single administrative position that every district has, like they didn't put principals on there, assistant principals, you know, everything, but they did talk about deputy superintendents and superintendents, and you can see that most of the districts do have those positions. Most of these districts, by the way, East Syracuse-Minowa, Fulton, Central Square, they're, have less student body than we have, basically, and you can see that they do have those positions there. West Tennessee is bigger than we are, but they have a lesser budget than we have, basically. They dealt with human resources and accountability, business administrator positions, you know, and they kind of tried to point out what they have. Some districts have a business manager, some have a director, some have an executive director, kind of shared that. Special education, they shared those that have directors and assistant directors, and some of them have different titles, a director of academic support and interventions, assistant director of people personnel services. We also found that there were a couple of districts that had positions we don't have, like a director of counseling, youth development leadership, that was at East Syracuse-Minowa, director of student support services, we have that, but I think Fulton also had that position. And then they went down and showed other positions that maybe districts have now or don't have. So, for example, Fulton has a, currently a director of literacy, they're now changing that title to a director of humanities. East Syracuse-Minowa has things like a director of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, coordinator of community engagement at East Syracuse-Minowa. Also, we saw at East Syracuse-Minowa, coordinator of Spartan Academy College Career Pathways. So it really was dependent upon what the needs are for those particular districts, right? I did, by the way, after I saw this, I wanted to compare also what our academic outcomes were compared to many of these other districts. So some of them are working on different things because of what they see in terms of outcomes in their district. So one district is focused on STEAM or STEM, another district is, is focused on, you know, literacy, one is focused on, you know, college and career pathways. We're trying to focus on ELA, math, you know, science, those kinds of things, basically. So it depended upon what each district needed. And then you had, the last part dealt with directors of health and PE. So we just kinda, he just gave us a little bit of comparative, just kinda see who's doing what, where, and where, basically. So his report, he is on track to have the report to us by June. We believe we'll probably get it before June, but they're, they are definitely on track for that. So, you know, we have some budget implications we kinda need to figure out. So one is kinda where you all, where are we at in terms of the organization chart? Tomorrow, we do have our meeting. If you'll go back to the budget calendar, we do need to kinda have everything solidified here at tomorrow's meeting so we can move forward with whatever the budget's gonna be. We do have some timelines that we have to get stuff out to the papers and get everything filed. So I wanna think about that here this evening. And then the last thing, if I can get this to go for me. Also wanted to think about where you all were with the, the college courses. At our last meeting, we kinda left it, I think it was a 3-3, on whether you wanted to do the courses at the, at the regular amount, or if you wanted to do them at the SUNY amount. So we, we put aside like $100,000 for that if we wanted to do it, to see where that went this year. We don't know if it'll cost that much, maybe less, maybe more, we're not sure until we kinda see what, what happens this year. So my recommendation, I kinda tried to allude to this at our last meeting, was that, you know, if we're gonna do the coursework, my feeling is, is that we just do the coursework and see how it goes. We, why? I, I'm saying we do it at the regular price as opposed to SUNY price. Really, I said this recommendation is because my concern is around ensuring equity and access for all students. You know, we're trying to leverage, you know, the playing field and make sure that everybody has access to the coursework. Second of all, we don't distinguish right now for a group of our students, the kids who go to CTE courses, you know, we, there's different colleges who give coursework to them based on whatever program they're in, and, you know, my concern is in terms of equity and being fair to all kids, right? So you go to a CTE program that gives you 18 or 20 credits, right, or even six credits, and it is, you know, that, that program that you're in every year may cost, an average cost for a CTE program, 11, 13,000, I can't remember for a CTE.
Or that's like 9,900.
9,900, excuse me. So 9,900 for the child to be in a CTE program, and they come out with college credits, right? But then, this kid who's in a classroom has a Supa course that may cost 450, which could be reduced if they are qualifying for that, how is that equitable? So you can get a $9,000 program, but you can't get a $450 course. But it just doesn't, it doesn't equate. It's hard to explain that to students and to families. And again, the other reason why I recommend yes with that is the process in place, we do have a process in place to lower those costs. And as I shared at the last meeting, what we will be doing is working with the counselors, working with the principals, and looking for those students, if they're eligible for a lower, reduced price because they are freer, or, you know, freer, reduced lunch eligible, that price gets significantly reduced. So we'll be looking to see how that looks. We don't know how it will shake out until we kind of try to see who's, who's interested. And then this year would be kinda like a year to try it and see, learn from it, basically. So with that said, my recommendation would just be, go, go at the regular course rate and see how it goes. So it's up to the board, but we just need to kinda know because we need to put it into the budget or take it out of the budget based on what you all would like to see happen. So those are the two items that are remaining, basically.
Yeah, I mean, everybody knows, I, I highly support this, and I, the other piece of it is just that we have the, you know, the Syracuse University thing in place right now. That's, that's our, teachers have gone and gotten the training, they've got certification. So, you know, if we look in the, after this year, if it's BUCO expensive and we have to make changes, well, then we can look for a long-term plan in terms of maybe making some changes there in terms of what we offer. But I think for right now, that is what we offer, that is what we have, and so I think in the name of equity, it's very important that we fund everything across the board.
Do you wanna take a vote, or you wanna take a?
Questions, please.
Sure.
So you mentioned the CTE program. What colleges are getting credit, what colleges are giving credit to the CTE program?
So we have, I think, some courses through OCC, I think Oswego has a couple courses there. We'd have to, we'd have to look to see, but I know OCC and Oswego definitely have courses that, there's some dual credits with that.
The PTech program.
Is a good one.
Yeah, that's, that's OCC.
Yeah, they actually have a classroom there on the campus.
So to your knowledge, are any of the CTA programs coordinating with private universities? Are any of the credits coming from a private university?
I don't know that, I don't, I'm not, not to my knowledge at this time.
Okay, well, I, I asked because you spoke of equity, and I actually don't view this as an equity thing. I think the equity comes from allowing students to get access to the courses that we would like them to get access to. As long as everybody gets the same access to the same courses, to me, that's an equity thing. Because to you say that CTE programs, you know, as an equity thing, if all the CTE programs are coming from state institutions, community colleges or four years, then I don't view that as an equity thing. Another question is the cost of Supa. You say some of the, some of the costs can be lowered. I know that through SUNY, if you qualify for the works, for the free reduced lunch, right? Does Supa ever discount?
Yes, they, if you qualify for the courses, it doesn't matter where you're from, what, no matter what college you go to, you can get a reduced price.
Okay, it was my impression that only SUNY was discounting, I didn't, I didn't.
No, at the last meeting, we shared that information, the last meeting.
Okay, so I guess I'm just gonna go to, I don't think it's, I don't, I don't like the idea of collecting taxpayer money and feeding that back into a private college. So I, I would not be in favor of, I'd be in favor of doing it across the board for every kid who wanted to at a state institution. I would be fully in support of doing that. I would not be in support of the Supa. I don't see how it's an equity thing.
But we offer Supa now, that's the problem. That's what's in place.
Sure, but we don't have.
And so to say it's not equity, you're saying to the person who can't afford it that it's, it's not an opportunity for you. It's an, only an opportunity for those kids who can afford it, even at the reduced rates.
But it, but taking, as far as I remember, the only courses at Supa are the macro and microeconomics. Nobody's been.
No, super forensics, sports.
Okay, there's a forensics one, all right, okay. So, but, I mean, they are limited, but when you looked at the cost of it, if I remember correctly, I mean, you said $100,000 for the budget, if I remember correctly, it was around the tune of $45,000 from a previous discussion, and a lot of that was from the fact that one Supa class of like 32 kids was costing like 11,000 or 12,000 dollars. So the majority of this money would be going to fund a private institution.
We contract with private companies all the time.
I know.
I mean, we, that's, that's what we do, is we funnel taxpayer dollars to private businesses.
Just my opinion.
Yeah, no, and I, and I get your point, and I think it's a good one. I just, if, if we didn't already have this in place, I think we would have a different conversation about what we would, what we might feel is a good thing to offer everybody. But we do have teachers who went and got their Supa certification, it is in place. Again, I'm not, I, I'm thinking we're not gonna have hundreds of kids coming out of the woodwork to take this, these Syracuse courses, because as you pointed out, the, the ones that we offer are, you know, they're very specific. So you have to wanna take them, let's just put it that way. So, you know, I, again, I'd like to have that problem, I really would love to see that problem. And then we can, in the long run, say, you know what, this is getting too expensive, so we really wanna keep these, these college credits coming, we may have to move away from Syracuse because it's just too expensive, and sub, you know, put more Oswego State courses in, or put more Keuga Community courses in.
So I, I guess, maybe I, thinking I'm looking for final, whatever you all wanna.
Well, did anyone else have any input? Because I know Linda didn't benefit from the conversation, and.
I hate to tell you this, Linda, but you're the breaking vote, so just be prepared. That's why we tabled it.
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
Maybe, people may have changed their mind.
Okay, is everyone ready to take, make a vote?
Is the vote on doing everything versus nothing, or is the vote on everything versus partial? See what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I mean, I would support a partial, I'm just not gonna support everything.
Okay, well, why don't we vote on the resolution? It isn't even a resolution, this is like in.
You wanna pass them?
Why does he go with the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so this is really voting on a, an item on the budget. As is, it would be everything. So if you're a no, we can readdress it after the vote, you know, if the vote, you know, You know, if the vote, you know, goes down, then we can readdress the, how mu, you know, what we're going to do for the budget.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So we currently have, we currently have students in our district who are taking classes from OCC, Keoga Community College, Oswego Community College, and Syracuse University. So they're taking them right here at the school, and they get dual credits. So they get a credit from the high school and they get a credit from the college, or, or multiple credits, right? Yes. So what we're, so we've had this discussion. And what I am recommending is that the board, um, if you're going to pay for the courses, then just pay for the courses for all the children, whatever the, regardless of what the, the charge is. And with the caveat that if there is an opportunity to get a reduction in the course, that the high school staff will work together to pursue that reduction in the cost, right? And the reason I'm saying, I'm recommending that is because it creates an opportunity for all kids to truly have access, right? There's not a group of kids who can take a college course at, through Supa because they have the money and another group that can't do it because they don't have the funds to do it. Um, so I'm trying to ensure equity and access for all students. Two, we don't, as I said, we don't distinguish with our CTE courses. Regardless of what program they're in, their programs are significantly higher than, and cost, than the cost that we pay for these dual credit courses. Their course, their classwork and coursework is nine thousand dollars. We, we do a lot. We transport them there. We give them all the materials and we support them. And they get college credits for it. They walk away, some of them would, yeah, 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 you have grandson with that. So I'm saying, you know, if, how is that nine thousand? How is that equitable? You pay for all of that for one group of kids, but this other group of kids, just because it's a Supa course, we say, I'm not going to pay for you because it's four hundred dollars for a course. It just doesn't, it's not equitable, right? And the other part that I, and my, my recommendation is based on is that, again, we have the process in place that we would pursue to try to lower costs wherever possible. So that's my recommendation, but now it's up to the board with the board would like to do. Okay, yes.
Can I just ask a, a clarification question, too? So this hundred thousand is for those credit-bearing courses and also for AP exams, right?
So, yes, yes, the AP exams, we did say we would pay for the AP exams as well. Yes, thank you. Um, and then just, if I could just add one more thing. We have a strategic plan that has outlined in it a whole goal around equity and access for all students. This is an opportunity to help us to meet the goals of the plan that we have in place as a district. So just want to also share that as well.
Also, just to add another point, the CTE and PTEC, um, there's very limited spots for that. And a lot of kids vie for those spots. So by doing this, we're actually opening opportunity for, you know, some kids who may not get into those programs to, to also be able to get some college credit.
Just, just so Linda knows this, what we discussed last time, are the courses through Keoga Community College are free. Those through SUNY Oswego, I believe, were a hundred and forty-five dollars. Those through Syracuse, you just said four hundred. I had, I had three twenty in my mind.
I can't remember. That was off my mind.
I had three twenty. So we're talking the difference between Keoga Community College, which is free, um, of Supa being over three hundred dollars a kid.
To CTEs that are nine thousand dollars a student.
All not funding public university, private universities, right?
It's, it's not so much for funding the university. We're giving the opportunity to the student.
Okay. That's fine.
Do you feel like you have?
I said, it's not just funding the private university. It's the opportunity we're offering to the students that they may not ever have.
Do you feel you understand the basis of it? Okay. Everyone ready?
So if, so is there a motion in a second?
It's just a.
It's a budget item, so it's not a resolution.
Okay.
They're going in the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is a budget workshop, so we're kind of voting on whether or not.
There's no motion to actually amend. Interesting, okay?
I mean, we can do that. We can absolutely do that. I, I mean, somebody can make the motion.
I will make the motion to accept.
The recommendation.
The recommendation on the superintendent to cover all of the extra college credit courses.
And AP.
And AP costs.
And AP. Tess.
Is there a second?
Well, thank you for doing that, Linda, because I didn't want to vote against it, but I think I wanted to vote against purpose. So now I can. So I would like to move to amend the motion to exclude the Supa classes.
Okay. Is, yeah, Syracuse. So he needs a. And you're taking that out completely. You're not even saying you'd pay up. You'd pay, you'd pay up to the, up to the SUNY Oswego rate you had said before.
Okay, hey, yeah, I, yes, I'm open to that. My, my motion is up to the SUNY Oswego rate.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment to the motion for the budget item?
Okay.
Motion.
All right, so thank you. And we'll go back to roll call vote. Karen, do you mind doing that for the original proposition?
For the original resolution, Tom Chappa?
Yes.
Heather Delcante?
Yes.
Pamela Dowd?
Yes.
Lisa Glidden?
Yes.
Jim McKenzie?
Yes.
Sean Amme?
Yes.
Linda Serino?
One comment. What Dr. Tim said is let's keep the money closest to the student, students. So I vote yes.
Resolution passed.
Okay. All right, and I guess we just need to know about the assistant superintendent piece. Do we, are we putting that in or not for the budget as well? We'd like to come back tomorrow with your final budget.
So because tomorrow we have to vote on the actual budget, he had put in the presentation the two different last, or actually, it's in this one, too.
Yes, okay.
Uh, the two different scenarios, one with the assistant superintendent position and one without.
Why did I put it in?
No, why are you, why are you suggesting that you take an assistant superintendent out?
That is not my recommendation. My recommendation is to keep it as, as I have suggested. Um, but in our last meeting, um, I shared with the board what it would be like with that in the budget and would it without. I'm recommending that we keep it in. We, we have a serious need. My concern is that if we, if we don't have that position there, um, the work that we're trying to accomplish will be a real challenge. And I'm, I'm really concerned that our, our main administrators would go back to doing exactly what we're doing right now because there's no extra help to do it. And I, I wouldn't be able to, to do all of what needs to be done. There's just no way. And so we would have to revert back to people having forty-something jobs under their title. There's just no way I can do it. So my recommendation is for the organization chart as I have shared.
So just to be clear, this, um, reorganizational chart, everyone, is what has been discussed over the series of several weeks. It's, um, it's in the budget presentation, uh, the little one.
The little packet here.
Little packet.
Where's the back?
So instead of just focusing on that position, I think we had talked about the entire chart.
Yes.
Um, which has a number of positions that are, that are embedded in the budget as, as presented. So I think the conversation, not to just open it all up, but, but really, we have to really talk about, you know, are we okay with the budget, budgeting this administrative structure?
No, no, no. So we already have right now a, we have a director of student services. So when that person leaves through attrition, what I'd like to see is an assistant director, okay? And we do have CSC, we have some, I think there's two CSE chairs who help to chair meetings in some of our buildings. Um, but they don't do all of the meetings, okay? So we, the assistant, excuse me, the executive director of special ed, currently, we, we don't have that. We have just a director of special ed. And what we're looking to do is make that position an executive position, which is, which actually becomes a member of the executive team. Um, so that person currently is a director. And having them manage another director, that creates a per, um, issue, a per concern. Yes, yes.
I understand it by looking at it, but, and I know I came from a smaller district. Um, but we had, um, an assistant director of special ed.
We need you on for everyone else to hear your thoughts.
I don't know. I think we had a C, uh, CSC chair. And that was it. Because the CSC chair ran those meetings.
Okay, so our district is a little bit larger than maybe the district, I know you were at Red Creek, okay? So we have over three hundred something children who have disabilities. Then we've got a 504 process, meeting process, which has over two hundred plus, two hundred and fifty-plus students as well. And then on top of that, we have students who are receiving what we call ERS services, education-related special support services. So those are children who are getting preventative services. So for example, we have a lot of children at the elementary level who are getting some, um, supports in speech and language. Some are getting some OTs or just PT supports. So we have hundreds of children in the district. The need is, is really big. So, um, I work, I came from Aletworth where I was a CSC chair and director of people personnel, right? Um, smaller district, yeah, smaller district. So that is, that is definitely something that a smaller district would do. But a district of this size, you, you would need someone who is in charge of a number of process. The CSC, all the CSC chairs to make sure they're on the same place or process. The triannual meetings, all of the IEP processes, um, all of those different levels of services that I just talked about. 504, CSC, CPSC, ERS. And that doesn't even account for all of the testing that has to go into those processes. So it's, it's a pretty, pretty extensive job for a district of this size, so.
And again, in a small district, the psychologists do the evaluations.
Yes, but we have, there's, there's nowhere psychologists with the amount of, so they do the evaluations of students. But they couldn't do all of the CSC chairing, plus do the counseling in the buildings, plus do all of the preventative planning that needs to go into place for the children and the triannual reviews. It would be absolutely overwhelming in a district of this size to just give that to the, to your psychologist. So yes, in a smaller district, you might find a CSC chair who does a number of the administrative things, right? I did that, right? But in a larger district, you will need some extra hands and assistance. Currently, we have the, the only, so we're not looking to change the whole structure of the department except for the director would become an executive director. And the assistant, excuse me, the, the, um, the student support director, when that person retires, we're just changing a title. So it's not really changing the whole function of the department.
All right, so the executive director of special education, can you give me one or two job descriptions that that person would do that the assistant wouldn't do?
Sure. So they would be, again, they're responsible for all training and support for staff. Uh, they're over all of the CSC chairing, all of the CPSC chairing, and the CPSC and CSC evaluation, uh, process. The 504, um, planning, uh, and then ESL services as well. So now the director, the assistant director is going to focus more on counseling, nursing, PT, OT, speech, teacher of the deaf or teacher of the blind services. They're, they're really going to focus on services as opposed to some of those administrative functions, and they work together as a team. Okay?
It would have been nice, I think, if we had had job descriptions attached where you were adding them.
Okay, I, I thought I went over this with the board multiple times.
We've gone over it, but this is a big, um, ask, you know what I'm saying? Especially what we heard from Dr. Tim. I just want to be clear in my head that we're not putting too many people.
I don't want to put.
I, I've trusted you, and I voted yes on almost everything. I'm just asking what they're, what they're going to do. Again, asking.
I respect that. I understand that. Um, so again, just to be clear, the roles for these two folks, you know, we're changing titles and a level of responsibility for one of the persons, right? They're going from under, being underneath the academic area to actually having their own area that they're, that they're actually going to be running. We currently have a director of, of special education, right? But we're, we're going to have that person in charge of that whole process. Currently, Carrie is in charge of that process. The way that that is right now, it just is not the most efficient and the most effective way. So we really, so we're changing the district in that instead of having all of these different people, well, it's not a lot of people, but a few people managing forty-six different processes, we are clarifying the buckets, right? So we have a bucket that's responsible for, for school business administration, okay? Which is one of the functions of the district. We have a bucket that's responsible for personnel, right? Not personnel plus secondary education, that is too much. Um, we have a bucket that's responsible for curriculum and instruction. And then we have a bucket that's responsible for special education and student services. Each are the functions of the district, very important functions. It, it's been, the way that it's been going now, it's been people trying to handle three, four, in some cases, ten or forty to forty-six buckets. So now we're trying to outline those areas more specifically so that they can focus in the ways that they are.
You will continue, if this is passed, you'll continue to evaluate.
Absolutely.
Evaluate that year to year because if in fact what could happen, happens, we're going to also have to go back, I won't, but you will, um, and know with justification which things we could set aside and then people double up again. That, that's all I'm thinking.
Uh, yes, so we would evaluate the position, their effectiveness every year, right? If things are not working or moving in the correct direction and we have made a wrong decision, I'm the first to admit, hey, that was not the right pathway. We need to take a different course and try something different.
Will they be hired under contract?
Yes, each of these folks would have a contract.
Yes, so the three-year contract.
Well, it depends on the, how many years we want, but generally, yes. So if you're an executive director, that's a three-year contract. If you are a regular director, you're under the AAP contract.
Oh, okay.
All right. If you are an assistant superintendent, that's a generally two- to three-year contract, okay? But yes, you can, we would definitely evaluate to see how it's working. And we'll use a number of items, qualitative and quantitative data, to determine if those positions are effective. My pleasure.
So as a follow-up to what Linda was talking about, Linda was concentrating on these red boxes with white, which is, you know, basically taking positions you have and reorganizing, like you say, for your buckets, which makes perfect sense. There's no gain, there's no net added to the budget because of those. You know, Linda also mentioned the, the voting for the previous things. And I'd just like to clarify, we've actually only approved four of these yellow text ones, right? So if I'm looking at the yellow text, if I remember correctly, there are nine of them. And all of those are brand-new positions that are not budgeted this year, right? We've already approved four of them, right? Which four were those again?
So we've approved the assistant director.
Assistant director.
Clerk, a clerk typist in the business, excuse me, in the personnel office. Uh, director of ELA and a director of math.
Okay, so those are the four that we've already, so we'd be looking to add brand-new lines of the onboarding specialist recruitment, three TOSAs, science, social studies, instructional tech, and then the assistant superintendent of schools, right? So those would be the additional, additional five. Okay. Um, thank you for clarifying that. I guess just as an overall comment, I'm going to go to what Dr. Tim's was speaking to earlier in how we try to keep things as close to the students as possible. And thinking about, you know, he started talking about using breakage and people going away and not replacing or repurposing. These are, all nine of these in one budget cycle would be additions. Some paid for through temporary grants or federal aid like the ESSA. Some paid, I think, um, one of them, maybe the director of ELA was paid through Title II A. You know, so some of them are grants, but the rest of them are adding money to our budget next year. And my concern is the amount of doing it, nine positions in one cycle. Looking at the presentation from last week, the administrative budget increase was nine point two seven million. I'm sorry, it was nine point two seven million total, which was an increase of seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. It's a nine point one percent increase. So that's seven, what struck me is that the whole budget proposal that you laid out. that you laid out for us last meeting was a total increase of 3 million. 777,000 of it being administrative. So we're talking about 26% of the increase just being in the administrative bucket. And some of these positions, as you mentioned, like the TOSSAs are actually not being paid for through there. You said the TOSSAs are being paid for through substitute lines. So my concern is adding nine new lines in one budget cycle after hearing what Dr. Tim's just presented to us.
I think, so I think there was also a message from Dr. Tim's too. I also heard him talk about the quality of the educational program and how, you know, you have to figure out what the needs are of the district. And, you know, some districts go year after year, and then the quality of the program is not quite where it needs to be at. And people go, how'd you get there, right? I can understand the concern around adding additional positions. But I have to, you know, I'm trying to be really, say this the right way. We need assistance to move the programs forward. Our ELA and math performance is struggling. We are trying to build with the gaps that are currently in place. And yet, we're trying to make the progress that we can, but we can't. We don't have enough hands to help us and to assist us. The structure that we have had in the past, it just is not effective. It is not working for this district. We have a school that is on a state list. I need to be at that school frequently. We need to be, we can't because there's just so many things going on in the district. We need the assistance of another person. And we need, we need in terms of our strategic plan, I'm going to go back to that again. We have put together a robust strategic plan. I know Rome wasn't built in a day. But around curriculum and instruction, we need these, we need these hands to help us and to assist us and to get us where we need to go to. Now, I'd be the first to say, if we cannot, if it does not work, as Linda has talked about, I would be easily ready to come back to the table and figure out something else. So we would be monitoring closely. But I have to be honest with you, continuing the status quo, it's not working for this district.
I think one of the things that I can add to this, because I've been on the board for so long and in education for so long, is that I always had a concern with the director of elementary and the director, you know, not being in the classrooms enough, not being available to support the principals. So, you know, this is hard. Jim, this is really hard. You can see the need for it from an educational point of view for nothing more than the principals and the teachers having support. The people are over them making sure that they have what they need and the support they need. So I can see it. But I also know your concern that can we afford it? I mean, I don't know. I, for years on this board, we kept taking away, taking away, even at the middle school, just taking, we took a teacher away, we took, you know, and that's the track, isn't it, Pam? We've taken for, I've been on nine years and every year, it's a takeback. So, you know, we're in a jam right now because we are in trouble.
I see that, Linda, and that's why I actually wanted to follow up on what you were saying, right? Because, and to your point, Dr. Calvin, I understand the math in the LA. We've already approved those two directors. Those are already in the budget. Those, we voted, those are already approved. So that's, those are two of the four, the ELA and math. So to say we take away, we take away, in this one budget cycle, we've already given four. I'm just...
This budget cycle is unique because we've never seen revenues like this before either. So if there's ever a time to try something, because I got to tell you, I go back to, the taxpayers deserve a good product. And so if there's a time to try something, now is the time. I'm sorry, Tom, I think I jumped in front of you.
Well, you just took my, saying my name out, that's fine. No, I just, I'm going to say the same thing. I'm going to go to Dr. Tim's as well. He said being strategic versus operational. We've been operational, not strategic. We're starting to be strategic in terms of our educational process, but we need to be, and economic process both. But in order to execute it properly, we have to be staffed properly. And I think that we also have to know and be aware and be accountable to the district, to the taxpayers, to each other, and that knowing that, let's go, we got two years, let's put it out there. And we have to see accountable and district change. And I know that Dr. Calvin would be amenable to making those changes if we're not successful. But I do think it's a unique experience to be in this position with the revenue that we have. And I think it is the time to execute it. I think we do. Being mindful of it, Jim, that you're saying, we keep our eye on it and we know that it's being, it's working. And if it's not, we change course. But I feel strongly that we're in a rare opportunity and we should take it to see if we can execute the strategic plan as effectively as we possibly can.
You said it so much nicer than I did.
No, I don't either. Let's have dinner.
Yeah, I guess I would just add to it, thinking more comprehensively about this cliff that we're coming to in two years. You know, the census just came out, the city lost 1,000 people, right? Having a strong school district will bring people here, right? So, and right now, I think it's actually happening the other way. So we need, I think it's a short-term investment for potential long-term gains that could help bolster revenues that we know we're going to lose from pilot agreements.
It's really a ripple effect, and I've talked to a lot of leaders in the city that have said, you know, we have a recruitment problem because at the end of the day, people aren't going to come if they can't, not in a place for their kids that they feel confident in bringing their family to. So we really have a, just a huge responsibility to, you just keep going in the right direction. Jim, I agree with what you're saying. This feels big and it feels, you know, weighty. I do think we need an assistant superintendent. I absolutely 100% think that as I look at this. I mean, could we wait on something like the onboarding specialist? Potentially, yes. You know, I think there are definitely a couple of the smaller ones, that one in particular. If people feel more comfortable, we could wait on that one, but...
So, I mean, I would just say, I think that's like being maybe penny wise and pound foolish because you're going to end up spending more time having to continually recruit people if you don't get the right people the first time.
And I get what you're saying, but we do have a new executive director personnel and instead of the, you know, the position being torn in two or 46 ways, it's, you know, we do have someone who's going to be solely focused on personnel. Do I think it's good to have it 100%? Like, I think recruiting has been something, you know, has been a weak point.
We could, we have a new director coming in. We could see if that person, wait for a little bit on that one and see how that person does. They may come in with some new ideas or some new, you know, thoughts on that. So I could see that position of all, if we would like to hold off on that one, I think we could do that and that would be all right. We could pull that out and just, but I can come back to you and share, if you don't mind, with the caveat, I would like to come back and share, hey, here's our ideas, here's what we're thinking. I mean, we have another clerical person there, maybe that could help, but we could, we could do that. I think we definitely could pull that off right now and try.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say, because of the way the budget cycles work, then it would be the whole, it would be the next one. Like, I think it maybe would, I mean, I guess I would propose keeping it in. We can always maybe not search for it right now. And then, you know, going back to Mr. Tim's presentation, it would just be more money we could roll over if we don't do it. But just because it's such a longer term.
So it's there, so like, when a new person comes in, if they say, no, I really need this help, then that opportunity is there. And if not, then that's rollover funds that you can just keep in your rollover. Does that make sense?
Right, yeah.
That's a good idea. I'd be willing to do that, absolutely.
Just as a follow-up to that, as part of the bigger picture, it's one of the other slides that we haven't focused on yet. But the proposal that we were last presented is a $3 million increase. It is a 3.3% increase. Both those numbers would be the largest increase of budget this district's had in five, six years. And that to me is not, to me, that's concerning about the idea that we've talked about of tapping breaks, of looking to make sure that we're not inflating budgets too fast because we're going to have to pay for all these later on more, right? So, again, 3.3% and $3 million would be the largest increase we've had in a budget in five or six years.
I just think, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, if that increase also accommodates an increase in performance and in, you know, programmatic success, then I'm all for it. And there's no guarantees there. And I know, Jim, you'd rather, you've been a proponent of maybe more teachers or more, you know, and I understand you're seeing opportunity cost. But I, those of us who were there when we severely took away, that to me, this is like putting things back where they should have been in the first place. Would you feel good about that?
There's a technicality to it. This is actually on our agenda to be voted on tomorrow. What confused me a little bit, it was after we voted on the budget, which to me, it kind of made sense to, on the line items for the agenda. The very first one was voting on the budget and the proposition for the buses. And towards the very end was this, and that just kind of seemed...
So we can switch the order for tomorrow.
Or if we happen to deal with this today.
I think it's better if we deal with it today because otherwise, the budget we're voting on won't make any sense if for some reason it doesn't come through. So I appreciate that. Jim, we love your attention to detail. I really appreciate it. I mean that. So is there a motion to accept the organizational chart as it is presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the organizational chart.
As presented, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion or any amendments?
It might fail, but I feel strongly enough that I got to at least try it. Yeah, I'm going to move to amend that any, that we only include the four new positions we've already approved. So those ones in yellow that have not yet been approved, that would not be in it.
Is there a second for that amendment? Okay, thank you, Jim. All right, back to the original motion. Roll call vote, Karen, if you would.
Tom Chappa?
Yes.
Heather Delcante?
Yes.
Pamela Dowd?
Yes.
Lisa Glidden?
Yes.
Jim McKenzie?
No.
Sean Amme? Linda Sorino? The resolution passed 5, 5-1, one upstate.
That's all I have for tonight.
A lot to happen tonight, yes.
If this time, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion?
Now, we need a second.
Second? Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, everyone.